I don't know why the iPad doesn't work anymore, but it doesn't open. Good morning. It's 10:00 a.m. on March 3rd, 2020, and I hereby call to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors and would ask you if you would like to join us as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm going to ask for a motion on the adoption of the agenda, but first I'd like to make a couple changes. On the consent agenda, item number eight should have been listed under public hearings. That's consideration of Resolution 20-63, and it has been published in all three papers in the county, but it was inadvertently put in the wrong place. So that would be one change I would like us to consider on the agenda. And the other one, so it would be to move that to number two under 13 public hearing items. The second one would be to defer additional item 14-3, which is Barb Steinbach's report to next week.
I would make a motion with those changes included.
I'll second that.
Okay. Discussion? Olson?
Aye.
Hiddens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Agenda is adopted. Thank you. Next, we have public comment number one, and this comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. So if there's any members of the public who would wish to address the board briefly on any topics on today's agenda, would you please go to the microphone there? Okay, seeing nobody, going to the microphone. I will close public comment number one. And we will now go to item five, bid opening for Tedesco Environmental Learning Corridor. Mike Cox?
Good morning.
Aye.
And?
Good morning.
Luke Monat with Shyve Hattery. Good morning.
Luke, good morning. What's your last name?
Monat.
M-O-N-A-T.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We brought that for our records.
Thank you.
We're going to be opening up the bids for the Tedesco Environmental Learning Corridor, Phase Three.
I think you all are familiar with this project. This is the final stage of the original three phases of the Tedesco Environmental Learning Corridor development, and this is the Trail Connection. It would extend from University, the middle roundabout on University, to R38. And all of the permits are in place, all of the necessary easements, et cetera, are in place. And so we're ready to open bids today. It looks like we've received six bids. So Luke is going to open those, make sure that they're all intact, have bid bonds, et cetera, and then I'll read them out for the record.
The first bid to be opened is from Howrey Construction Incorporated out of Rockwell City, Iowa.
Could you spell that?
H-O-W-R-E-Y Construction Incorporated, and again, out of Rockwell City, Iowa.
Thank you.
The bid security is included. We have the bidder status form and the bidder identity form. The second bid to be opened is from All-Star Concrete LLC out of Ankeny, Iowa. Addendum number one has been acknowledged. The bidder identity form is provided, as well as the bidder status form. The next bid to be opened is from Construct Incorporated out of Ames. The bidder status form is included. Addendum number one is acknowledged. The bidder identity form is included. The next bid is from Concrete Professionals out of Altoona, Iowa. The bid security is included. Addendum number one is acknowledged. The bidder identity form is included, as well as the bidder status form. The next bid is from Caliber Concrete out of-
Sorry, what was the name of that again?
Sorry, the next bidder is Caliber-
Oh, Caliber.
-Concrete LLC, C-A-L-I-B-E-R, out of Adair, Iowa.
You're really going with the A-named communities this morning, aren't you?
Addendum number one is acknowledged. The bidder identity form is included, as well as the bidder status form. And the bid is $1,051,228-- excuse me, $1,051,228.20.
1-0-5-1. Thank you.
Final bid received and to be opened is from Absolute Concrete from Slater, Iowa. The bid security is included. Addendum one has been acknowledged. The bidder identity form is included, as well as the bidder status form. And that gets us to the bottom of the stack. We will take and review these and tabulate the bids, and I believe we're-
And then we'll-- engineers will make a recommendation on low-responsive responsible bidder. We will take that to the Conservation Board meeting next Monday night. They will make a recommendation that then we'll bring back to this board next Tuesday for bid award. Okay?
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay.
The audience clears out.
It's somewhat boring and routine task for some of us to sit through, but it's a very necessary one, so thank you, everybody, for your patience. We will head on now, and thank you.
Thank you.
We will head on now to agency reports. We have Lisa Reeves from Raising Readers, and I understand you did send a report, but we missed it, so.
I missed it.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for doing that, and we'll certainly-- are looking forward to your verbal report. And would you also identify yourself for the minutes, then?
Yes, Autumn Long, data specialist for Raising Readers.
Autumn, good morning. Lisa, good morning. You can start any time.
Okay. Thank you for having us. It's a pleasure to be here. The vision of Raising Readers in Story County is the commitment to a future in which generations of young children get a solid foundation in reading, communication, and learning. This will help them prepare to become successful students, citizens, and workers. Due to several years of expansion, our focus for fiscal year 2021 is on streamlining and enhancing programming. In order to do this, we will continue to utilize statistics to provide the best programming possible. Additionally, as parents are a vital component in their children's development, we are working to make our parent education programming more robust.
One of the areas that's funded through Story County Board of Supervisors is our Thrive by Five programming. And in that area, research continues to support the early exposure to literacy and language development. Activities are essential to brain development for life and future success, those long-term positive impacts. Thrive by Five programming is a priority for Raising Readers. Some of the things that we're doing right now to increase parent education in that area, specifically with ACPC Reading Buddies, we're increasing that parent communication and that education, parent education about the resources available. One way we do that is using the data from our internal evaluations to let them know specifically which areas of language their child may have deficiencies and how to address those areas. And then our new Storytime program, that's in partnership with YSS, and their Baby Bump and Beyond program is going well since September. We'll be adding another component here shortly to increase that parent component by allowing them the opportunity to check out developmentally appropriate toys, and with that, offering the parent education piece on how to use those toys to enhance specific areas of development and language for those children.
Another area that Story County funds is the out-of-school learning. Statistics show that direct correlations between third-grade reading ability and later academic life-- there's a complete correlation there. Our out-of-school programs that address this have a solid foundation, so we have decided to move out into the county a little bit farther, and we will have the Summer Reading Buddies program in the Colonesco and the Roland Story School districts this summer. We have added a parent education component to the Harrison Barnes Reading Academy. Both of those programs, we have an after-school program and also the Summer Reading Buddies program. And we've added the parent component to that, where we have meetings with the parents on the first day to go over what their children will be doing and how they can help with that learning at home while their children are in the program.
And then the last area funded is our advocacy efforts, and advocacy is a critical component to all of our programming. It's present in all of them. But specifically, we strive to highlight the importance of literacy by increasing the access to high-quality books, further fulfilling our mission. Reading with children from a young age not only helps with literacy and language development, but also bonds that child and caregiver together. And research shows that that bond actually promotes healthy social-emotional development that they'll need for later success in school and life, so we really emphasize that. We continue to engage parents throughout the county with small-group sessions on how to utilize the research-based technique of dialogic reading. Dialogic reading is, instead of the parent just reading to the child, the technique encourages interactions with the book, being the vehicle for parent-child conversation, so you're reading it together, not just to the child. And then, in honor of our 20th anniversary this year in 2020, we're expanding the Little Free Library program out into more parks throughout Story County. Our goal is to have at least one Little Free Library in every community in the county. Little Free Libraries, they increase access to books in neighborhoods where maybe it's not as easy to get them. And research shows that's essential for language and literacy outcomes. And just to add a little bit of cheesiness to our Tuesday morning, we want to spread the stories through Story County.
Let that one go. I like it. In conclusion, we sincerely thank the Board of Supervisors for your continued funding for our literacy programming. You are providing a long-term solution to the academic, social, emotional, and thereby economic future of the children in Story County. Thank you.
Questions? Comments?
Excuse me. Thank you for coming this morning. I do have just one question. You mentioned working with families and engaging them in reading and suffering to their kids. So how do you reach out to those particular families? How are you getting those referrals to work with them?
The-- it depends on the program. The children that are enrolled in the program, for example, the children that are in ACPC Reading Buddies, we-- ACPC has-- it's called Cartwheel. It's an app that they communicate with parents through, and so we send out emails, essentially, or texts to the parents through that app. And then for the Harrison Barnes Reading Academy, the parents enroll their children in that program. It can be through teacher referral or just them finding us. And with that one, then, we send out weekly emails to the parents to let them know what their child is working on, and then also some tips on things that they can be doing at home.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So I have two questions. The first one was, you said that you have a reading program. I thought I heard it was YSS. Is that for little kids? And so that's separate from the libraries reading program, right?
Right.
Okay.
We actually go to the Baby Bump and Beyond classes, which are twice a month, and we have Storytime with the kids. And we're kind of doing a little bit of a shift with that program a little bit more to work on that enhancement. And so we are working this month to try to do a parent-child Storytime before the meeting. And then we'll-- and then another week, the third week of the program, then we will do the toy checkout, where we can model how to play with the toy. And we'll also be modeling dialogic reading during the Storytime, so.
I like that.
Mm-hmm.
Cool. So, any other questions about all those little reading libraries you're looking at in our county? So is there a particular age group that those books will be targeted to, or will it run the gamut of all children in secondary school, plus little ones?
What we're doing is the two-story libraries, and so the top half can be for adults and the bottom half is for children. And so it's kind of a-- we do go around and restock them every month. And so our focus is zero to eight, so the majority of our books are zero to eight.
And how are you, then, getting information out about those little free library locations?
Well, we're having a 20th anniversary celebration in April, where we will be showcasing the libraries that we're building. And then the people that are sponsoring the little free libraries to be built, they can either choose which location they will be in, or we have targeted certain parks that they'll be in.
We're working on a map that will go on our website, pinpointing all the locations of our exact ones, but there are so many throughout Story County that aren't, you know, sponsored by us. But we're working on a map so that people will know exactly where ours are, anyway.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And I just had a comment. I really appreciate you looking at data and basing what you're doing on research, because I know the research shows that the success of children in early childhood is so predictive of what's going to happen in their lives in the future, whether they're going to keep going, you know, whether they're going to stay in school, whether they're going to be successful, or whether they're going to get in trouble later in various ways. So I really appreciate hearing that you do that and that you share that with parents, because I think it's important that parents understand that information as well. And I was a Raising Readers volunteer at one time, so I know how important it is. And I thank you, and I thank your volunteers for all the work they're doing.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, and we'll look forward to getting your written report, then.
Yes.
Sorry about the glitch. Okay, next is consideration of minutes. We have two sets of minutes from our February 18th and our February 25th. If there are no corrections, I think we could do those in one motion.
I move that we accept the February 18th and the February 25th, 2020, meeting minutes.
I second.
Okay. Hiddens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Minutes are approved. Next, consideration of personnel actions. I would entertain a motion for approval of personnel actions as listed.
I still make that motion?
Second.
Okay. Olson?
Aye.
Hiddens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Personnel actions are approved. And next, we have claims, and we entertain a motion for approval of claims as listed.
I move approval of the March 5th claims as listed.
I second.
Okay. Hiddens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Claims are approved. Next, we'll go to consent agenda, and we've already amended this to remove item eight to as public hearing item, so I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I would make that motion?
Second.
Olson?
Aye.
Hiddens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. So consent agenda items approved. Then we'll go to other reports. There are none. So am I missing anything?
Other reports is, what's next? Overview of Iowa's assessment valuation process?
No, no.
Other reports.
It's other reports.
Oh, it should not be listed as 12. We have other reports as 11, and then we have 12.
Oh, sorry.
On the agenda. So we are ready for our county assessor's report on assessment valuation process. Wayne Scharath?
Good morning, Wayne.
Good morning, everyone. Thought you were going to skip me there. Well, I was confused. We don't want to skip you.
Excuse me. Got a tickle.
No. Yes, and then presentations. There you go. There you go. Yep.
It's the first time I've used this. Well, good morning, everyone. My name is Wayne Scharath. I'm the story county assessor. I was asked to-- my presentation today, to give an overview of what the Iowa assessment valuation procedures are. This will kind of give an overview of how the assessed values are established and how all the items that happen in between to get to the taxable value, which is used for the various taxing bodies to set their budgets. The primary-- okay, see that? Okay, the primary purpose, or a few items I'm going to talk about briefly, is real estate property valuations. the equalization process involves, what is assessed value versus taxable value, the definition and purpose of the rollbacks. And I'll give a history of the rollback factors over the last several years. And then I'm going to discuss briefly the link that's between residential and agricultural class of properties. The method of classifications that we have, just briefly, we have agricultural land and outbuildings. They're assessed on their productivity value, and, which is a little different than the other classes. As you see, all the other classes are on their market value. And I'll go into a little more detail on the ag land in a little bit. The commercial industrial is at market value. Residential, that would include all your urban city residential property, your rural acreages, and also your ag dwellings on the farms. They are all at market value. Multi-residential is a new class that was established back in 2015. It's at market value. What the legislature had done, it was partly to do with the rollback that was in the commercial property. They were trying to give relief to that class on the rollback. The different items that were pulled out of the commercial class would be apartments, mobile home parks, nursing homes, assisted living, things of that nature. Utilities and railroads are valued by Department of Revenue. They have reports that they have to fill out each year if they send to the state, depending on the different type of utility, if it's electrical or pipelines, things, it's based on their, how much, say a pipeline, and how much they run through the, how much they run through there, come through there, based on miles and things of that nature. It's a form that they have. By law, we're required to revalue real estate every year. We're required to revalue every two years in the odd-numbered year, which is the revaluation year. And that would be the 2019 that we finished up last year. The 2019 assessments will be the values that will be used to generate taxable value, and it'll be used for budgets that you're currently working on. I'll talk a little bit about the agricultural assessments. They're a little different than the other properties. Code Section 441.21 of E, it says the actual value of agricultural property shall be determined on basis of its productivity and net earning capacity. We establish a net income that's capitalized at a 7% cap rate. That cap rate is established by the legislature. Typically, if you did an income and expense statement on a farm, income, the cap rate probably should be in about the 2% to 4% range. So the higher the cap rate, the lower the value. The lower the cap rate, the higher the value. So it's kind of a circuit breaker to help control increases in value. The value is spread uniformly among all counties and classes of agricultural. On the land, we use CSR 2, which is the corn suitability rating. That's established by USDA through our SOARL survey, and that is utilized to spread our assessed value by parcel. And as again, the, well, and also the outbuildings are, get what they call an ag factor, that I'll talk about a little bit later, they're reduced along with, the land and the outbuildings are included in the productivity value. As I said a little earlier, the ag dwelling is assessed at market value. The formula for the ag assessments, we take a five, for the 2019 assessments, we take a five-year average of the income and expenses for the years 2013 through 2017. We have all the yields of all the crops. We have all the expenses, insurance, taxes, the various prices that were paid for the different crops, which would be the corn, beans, oats, hay, other maybe crops that are out there. Government payments are included in this. Then we establish a net landlord income per acre after real estate taxes are subtracted out. And then we capitalize at a rate of 7%, which I mentioned a little earlier, which is established by the Iowa Legislature.
What's your source of all that information?
Several sources. Department of Revenue, Iowa State University, Insurance, Commerce Commission. There's probably about 10 different sources.
Okay. Wayne, what happens if someone is not farming their land? It's basically just sitting there dormant. So how do you make that assessment?
Are you talking land that's maybe in a government program?
No, I'm talking, maybe it's improbate or something, I don't know. But I mean, literally, someone has a large parcel.
Waste ground, things that, if it's non-tiltable, then we give an ag, or we give an adjustment. It's called a non-crop factor. That was established about six, seven years ago. There's a fair, it's based on the CSR rating. We take the base, the tilable CSR, Story County's 82, so we take half of that, that's 41. So any non-tilable ground that'll be laying there waste, if it's under 41, it pays on the same rate. But if it's, whatever's over 41, because you could have waste ground that could have a high CSR, say it has 70. So the difference between that 70 and a 41 would get an adjustment of about 80%. Or, yeah, about 80%.
So this is not aggregate, this is farm-specific?
Yes.
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 That's a lot of work.
They do it by county, this, the information, but we have it, yeah, by, the SOARL survey is the big, the big item, how we, it's, there's a lot into the formula that a person doesn't realize. So, yeah, we do give an adjustment between tilable and non-tilable.
Thank you.
The statewide decree, okay, last year in 2019, the years, like I said, 2013 through 2017, were the income and expenses that were used, and that's statewide, but it's by county. And the average in the state of farmland and outbuildings went down approximately 35%, which is one of the biggest decreases there has been for some time. Story County went down about 24%. And our 2019 ag land, well, it should be ag land and outbuilding, is $1,455 an acre, which is about 16% of market value. So you can see the agricultural class, that they're not at market, there's a substantial reduction from, because the average, the average sale price in Story County is around $9,500, according to Iowa State. So, but we take a five-year average also to get that ag factor, but, but it's at about 16%. And that, it runs probably 16 to 20% throughout the state of Iowa. We have three basic methods that we use for valuing property. It's market approach, cost approach, and income approach. And the market approach is where we find, is typically used for residential properties, but it also can be used for commercial. You find other similar type properties in location, age, size, condition, what they sell for. And then we have, we do computations and analysis of different areas on how to establish the value based on sales. The cost approach is what it would cost to replace the property using materials and labor. You replace a property with a similar property, and then you add the land, market value of the land to that. That approach is probably used mostly when the property, would be most relevant is if the property was fairly, brand-new. We are required to use an Iowa Real Estate Appraisal Manual by Department of Revenue. It is a cost approach manual, but we take it and we adjust it to a market approach. There's different map factors and things, and based on location, and by county. The income approach is the other approach, which is used for income property. You would add, which would be like apartments, office buildings, and things of that nature. We would analyze the income and expense statements of those, what is typical for different types of properties. And then we would also capitalize that, and that's how we get our estimate of market value based on that approach. Now, there's an equalization process that's in place, which is, like I had said, valuations are established, we're required every two years to equalize values. We have what we call a sales ratio, which is an indication if we're too high, too low, of how a property sells versus what it's assessed at. And we have, we're supposed to be between 95 and 105% on a median racial. A median racial is basically a midpoint racial in an array of ratios. And we have to be within that range, or we would get an equalization order from the state. Typically, assessors do their own analysis internally, or they should be. And if they're below or hot, above that, they would adjust their properties accordingly. Now, throughout the county, we would have areas that maybe go down, maybe ones that don't change very much, because we base it on the market. You know, if you're comparing Huxley to Zering or to Story City, there's, the markets are different throughout the county. If we are not within that range, the Iowa Direct to Revenue can issue what they call equalization orders. And that's by class, not by parcel. If the sales ratio is not in that, it can be an increase, or it can be a decrease. The primary purpose of doing these equalization orders are, and to have, and to be within this 95 to 105% range, is basically, because, one of the primary reasons, school districts cross county lines throughout the state. So, and the state of Iowa pays back school aid to the various schools. So what they want, they don't want that valuation to vary within that 95 to 105% when the, say something goes over into Boone County or Hamilton County. In our instance, that way, the school aid is being paid back fairly. Because if one county would be lower, or one too high, you would have an inequity in what was paid back. That's, was passed back several years ago. Then, the taxpayer, like I said, we have the assessed value, which can be the market value on all properties, or the productivity value on ag properties. But the taxpayer pays on a reduced taxable value, which is from the assessed values I had indicated. Back in 1978, the Iowa Legislature passed an assessment limitation law, which is referenced as the rollback. And this was due to rising residential values throughout the state of Iowa. In the 70s, values in the early, well, I started in the early 70s, but values started going up a lot, and they, they were trying to, you know, have kind of a circuit breaker, a control that they couldn't increase by a certain amount. You'd have, you'd have rampant inflation on values. The purpose was to push the impact of the inflation of these classes. The rollback is calculated by our Department of Revenue. It's usually certified to the auditor's office around November 1 of each year. Now, this next slide, I'll give a little bit, I'm going to kind of concentrate a little bit on the assessment limitation thing, because it's kind of confusing on how it works, on how you think it would work. I mean, it, it's, it makes sense, but there's some little quirks in how it works. The residential and ag class, the taxable value is limited to a 3% annual growth statewide, and that's from a revaluation. That does not include new construction. That's separate. Now, the commercial industrial class is assessed at 90% to determine its taxable value. Prior to 2015, they were also limited by the 3%. I'll have a chart a little later here. In past history, they used to allow a 6% growth, they used to allow 4% growth, and then they ended up being a 3% growth here, I think it was around 2015. Now, I got the multi-residential class, which I referenced a little bit ago, they pulled out of the commercial class. And the commercial industrial class, we're paying on 100% of their value prior to this 2015. And so were the, the types of properties that were in the multi-residential class. So what the legislature did back in 2015, it was actually in 13, but it came effective in 15, they put the commercial industrial at 90%. The growth was done away with. There was backfill that was brought into the picture, which is another presentation, I guess. But, but it's, we hope it stays there, or it keeps coming on. But the multi-residential, what they did then, instead of being at the 90%, they let them, then they were going to get a 3.75% decrease in their rollback until the year 2022, and then the rate would become the same to whatever the residential rate is. Now, to help soften the blow a little bit, they, I don't have that on here, but it, they created what they call a business property tax credit for the commercial and industrial properties. They set aside $125 million statewide for those two classes where the property owners can sign up for it. And it was over a three-year period. It started at 50 million, it went to 75, or 90, and then it went to 125 million, and it stays there. And that's a portion back to the counties, is figured into this. And what they, and what it amounted to, it comes off the property tax rate, or off of their tax statement. Up to the first, about $258,000, I think it is, the business tax credit is probably worth about $2,500 to $3,000, if you have that kind of value. A lot of them are getting, can get $900 to $1,500 if it's under that. So that is how they helped to try to cushion and soften the increase in the taxes of those, they really concentrated on anything that was commercial industrial, and then they created this multi-residential class. Now, the utility properties, they are, I guess, said.
Before we go on to utility, I do have a couple of questions. All right. The first one is, you said 22 is when they're supposed to equalize out? I thought it was 25.
It's 2022.
Okay, thank you. So then, I'm going to ask you about House Study Bill 695. I assume the assessors are following that, okay? So there's a big hullabaloo, because it would immediately drop down to the, drop multi-residential down to the same equalization rate as residential as of 2021.
Yes, that's what they're proposing.
Okay, and so, I just, I guess, somewhere I'd read the 2025, and I thought, well, that's a huge jump, that's what people, or drop, but that's not it, right?
Well, as a cleanup bill, there's been problems with the business property tax credit on how it's handled at the state level. It's kind of a nightmare. They audit, the state, state of Iowa audits, they can go back three years. And they check all the, they do it through GIS. They download the whole, the whole system. A Matt, our GIS person, has to maintain a level, or a layer of that information. And it's, the Department of Revenue wants to do away with, they want to do it similar to the ag credit, which farms get. If you have 10 acres or more, you get automatic credit based on how much the state has set aside. They want to make it automatic, that they get, well, the business, or a credit in place of the business tax credit. And they were going to make, was being proposed, anything over $150,000 that's valued to commercial industrial will pay on the residential rate. And then anything over that would pay on the commercial rate.
So every.
So that's just a proposal. I, it flies, I find hard to believe.
Okay.
In that format.
Because I guess from ISAC, it said that that means each piece of commercial property we would have would drop 34% of its taxable value at the higher rate, at the 90%.
That's true in some situations, possibly.
Okay.
We're not sure how that's going to work.
Okay.
But it's to be seen. I think it's probably going to have a lot different face, if it passes, a lot different face than what it's been originally proposed.
Thanks for.
I have, just, I have a question on, let's see, that's a slide you've got up right now. When you say commercial industrial, the assessed value is adjusted by 90%?
They pay in 90%.
So it's adjusted to 90%?
To 90%.
And the same for the multi-residential?
Yes, it's adjusted to, they pay in 71%.
They pay at 90, and they, oh, and they pay, okay. Because I would, I would normally read that, the by 90%, meaning it takes 71%.
No.
90% off, and I thought, I don't think so.
I should have.
No, that's okay. I, I know that's, I mean, the way people talk about the rollback, I think people get confused about that, so I just wanted to make sure I wasn't.
The rollback is very confusing, and.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to keep it brief and simple as possible.
Thank you.
Utility properties, which are done by the state of Iowa, they have, they're allowed an 8% growth. Now, railroad property, which is separate from utility, they take, they're adjusted by, they're, they use the lowest assessment percentage that's out there for commercial industrial or utilities. And I think that's around 90%. They've basically been on that. One, and on the residential and ag class, I just want to address that a little And on the residential and ag class, I just wanna address that a little bit again. I made reference that they're, those two classes are linked together. Why, I'm not sure, but that, that's been done way back in 78. They're, they're linked together on the growth, and the primary purpose was to control the growth of both those classes, because they were growing the fastest at the time it was established. And it's probably true over time, because your commercial industrial doesn't grow as fast as residential does, or ag, in over history. They're both linked together, and they're allowed to have 3% growth. Now, what that means, and that 3% growth from revaluation, new construction once again is taken out. If one of the classes has less than the 3% growth, the other class is allowed to the same percent of growth. The next slide here, what they're trying to create is a balance between residential and ag class, ensure that they increase from revaluation at the same rate. And then also on the growth factor, the taxable value to continue to grow each year by a allowed percent, even if inflation stops, until it reaches 100% of the assessed value. Now, this is where, this in 2019, because of the big decrease on ag, where it really shows how this works, which is hard to believe, but it does. But the final thing, it results in a moderating of the taxable increases during periods of increasing valuations, and spreading them over, and spreading the tax value to years with little or no growth. Now, this chart, Iowa, this is a chart of the state of Iowa, that shows what the values have changed. Now, here, like I said, the average value was close to 35% decrease statewide on the ag class. Now, here, if you look in Story County, in our area, we went down 24, Marshalls 23, Polk's 23, but there's some of them that went up 37%. The average was close to 35. And, so here's a chart the Department of Revenue has together, kind of summarizes that. There were some major shifts throughout the state. A lot of your lower, southern counties weren't quite as much. You had, I think, one county that went down only, went down 8%, but there were significant decreases.
Did you say there were some counties that went up?
I don't see.
No.
Yeah, okay, and I can't read it.
No, nothing went up to them or-
Nothing went up.
Thank you.
I don't think anything went up.
Okay, thank you.
And that's just the ag class that you're referring to?
Yeah, this is just the ag class. Because when I get into the next slide, so we'll show where there's a big change in the taxable value in the ag, and I'm trying to lead up to it, what happened. This is a chart that shows the assessed value versus the market value. And like I said, Story County is at 16%. In 2019, the average market value in the state for ag land and outbuildings is $7,264. The average assessed value, or taxable value, is $1,383. We're $1,455, so we're above the average. And we didn't go down as much as the average during that time period. So it's got all the several years here, and how it's, how it's changed. I mean, back in 2001, it was 790 versus 1,857. So, there's been a fluctuation over the last, since late seventies. Now, this chart is a summary of, it's quite busy, but I'll drill in here a little bit on the ag area. Now, this column here is ag, and this is residential, and they're both allowed to grow 3%. And look what happened to the rollback on ag. In 2018, it was, it was 56%. But because the average went down about 35% statewide, it is allowed to increase up to 81% to allow a 3% growth statewide. And so, and residential, based, you know, only, actually went down just a hair. So, there, because of this major fluctuation, they were allowed to grow. And they're allowed to grow, like I said earlier, all the way to 100%, if the right conditions. And this shows when you have a big decrease, the rollback will go up, which is, it's hard to believe, you could lower the value 35% or 24% in our situation, and it goes up around 9 on our taxable. But the rollback is where the big thing is, and this is averages throughout the state. And here's your multi-residential class, where that started, yeah, it started in 2015, it went from 90%. Well, they were at 100, like all the other classes were. This is your commercial and industrial. See, they were all around 100%. And your railroads, and this is your, railroads here, I guess, but they're allowed the 8% growth. So there's a lot, I guess what I'm trying to stress, there's a lot of computations that are involved, you end up with the taxable evaluation, and I'm trying to make this kind of as brief as possible, but there's a lot of, a lot of different things involved. Now, here's a chart I put together, which, this is the tax, assessed value and taxable value by class. This is what I guess have access, doesn't include the city of Ames, but the residential, the assessed value in residential and ag dwellings went up, or, excuse me. Yeah, the assessed value, oh, that should be down. Oh, yeah. Oh, this is ag, oh, excuse me, I was thinking of ag land, that's not, that's not right. Yeah, residential and ag dwellings went up 13.5% unassessed. Taxable, they went up about 11. Ag cultural land went down about 25%. It went down, it went up about 8.8. Ag culture outbuildings went up, went down about 14.5%, and they went up about 24. One thing to remember, ag culture outbuildings are only 3% of our total ag value. So, that's where we ended up, it's about 9% up. Because the buildings are also factored back to the 16%. So we take the replacement cost, we give a physical depreciation to an outbuilding, and based on its condition. Commercial, which is at 90%, so it doesn't have any 3% growth allowance, it went up about 8, and its taxable is about 8. And our multi-residential, we had gone up about 28%, and we were about 22% for our county. Industrial went down about 9, and ended up, down about 10. We had one property that had a big change on it, that affected that. Railroads and utilities was about 13% on both sides of the coin, and gas and electric was about 2.9% on assessed value, and 3.5% on taxable. So the grand scheme of things, the assessed value went up about 4.2%, and the taxable went up about 8.9. So you've got a lot of numbers that are going all directions, and this is by class, every individual property is done on its own, based on its, I mean, the ag property is based off the CSRs, which is kind of cut and dried to what it is. And, but then residential, commercial, that's all based on what the market is in that area of the county, and what type the property is, and what the market's doing. So there's a combination of numbers that end up putting these numbers together. I guess that's about the end of my presentation. I don't know if anybody has any additional questions? I know there's a lot, you could probably talk forever on this, but it, I'm trying to give it as simple as possible, but-
It's a complicated issue, and I appreciate you going through-
There's a lot of calculations that are involved, that people on the outside don't realize.
Yeah, and all those calculations come from, not in this building. They come from, I mean, basically all the formulas, all of the-
Yeah, a lot of the formulas are set by law, and then we do the analysis on everything-
So you're just, yeah.
On all the different things, so. It's, you know, there's a lot of legislation being passed, or being proposed, I know what it will or won't do, it's hard to say. But, our county on ag did not go down the norm, so that's where Story County had a little better income and expenses during that five-year period that they had, so. So I don't know if anybody has any other questions?
Is there any other legislation besides the bill that Loris mentioned that we should be watching on this?
I guess we just had a conference call yesterday for lobbyists, Senate File 695 is the big one. The, the big one is business property tax thing, and I guess, from what it, you know, Story County, I don't know how we, much we would be affected one way or another, but a lot of the smaller counties, I mean, it's significant what they get paid back, and it's gonna change it like, Loris, you were referencing, because it's the first 150,000, listen, the first 150,000, they pay the 90%, but then anything over 150,000, they pay on residential. I think it's one way or the other, I can't remember which way it was.
It's the residential up to the first 100, because you got the-
Okay, it's residential up to 150, then over-
So small communities-
It's gonna affect them. And, and so the shift, and I know we had some representatives at a meeting a couple weeks ago about that bill, and I think the Department of Revenue is very aware of, you know, the ramifications, and I, I think all entities that were involved there are gonna try to work together, but it's certainly something to watch, because it's a major bill. It's all, a lot of cleanup on a lot of things. It isn't just property tax, I think it has sales tax and income tax, I mean, I think there's another companion bill for that.
And also, if I understand it correctly, in this bill, that business tax credit, that right now, the 125 million that's been spread out among the various counties to make up for the 10% drop between assessing at 100% and dropping to 90%, that they want to take that money and reapportion it also. And so, but, when I was reading this, I couldn't quite figure out the math, it did look like we could be, it could be a $500,000 difference to the county, that's on my math skills, which nobody should, like, go to the bank on, okay? But, so I just, that's why I asked this morning, is where, where do you think this might have?
I haven't seen the calculations on what it would want to do, I think they're still trying to digest what it, it's quite a lengthy bill, and there's a lot of questions on some of the things, what they're actually trying to mean, and, I mean, that, it should shake out before it's over with.
Okay.
I would certainly watch it, because it's gonna have a major effect on, and I think the backfill is involved in that one or another one, or there was reference to it, so.
Right, that's, that's that business, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because they want to do 125 million, they do the other thing. And some county, and maybe our county, it's not gonna affect as much, but smaller ones it will, but it will affect us, I mean, there's no question.
The other thing that, that I think about why not affecting the county, Story County per se, is, but I'm thinking about Huxley and Story City, maybe Nevada, about that $150,000 value as compared to what they may have, several small businesses that might be in, say, $250,000 and below, that's my thought.
I know Lake of Cities was present at that meeting, and they were very concerned.
Okay, they were.
And so, they were supposed to do some calculations on what it would affect Cities. I mean, Lake of Cities is a big player, too, with ISAC and other groups.
I want to thank you for this, and not only for what we learned, or will have to think about to realize what we learned, okay, a little bit, and apply it.
It's a complicated formula.
But it's, we've now, we have you on record, video, so that other people could watch it, or we could direct someone who asks, or comes in, saying, look, there's about a 20-minute presentation from the assessor. And I think that's good, because that, for someone who's asking a lot of detail, that might be exactly what they need to watch.
If anybody has questions, or has a video, or come to us, we're glad to speak to them. A lot of times, they tailor to their situation, which is-
Sure.
You understand, how's it gonna affect me? And they're all gonna be very, very, well, thank you, if nobody has any other-
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We'll go on then to our public hearing items, and the first one is a consideration resolution 20-66, approval of FY '21 maximum property tax dollars. Assistant Auditor Lisa Markley.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, Senate File 634, which was passed last year, requires an additional publication of our budget. One of the reasons that we had, we wanted to have Wayne present today was to help perhaps understand valuations and what we're basing our property tax askings on. So, as we talked about numerous times during the budget work sessions, and during the whole process, we have an extra 15 days now to certify our budget, but we needed an extra public hearing. This has to be a, by resolution, for a property tax maximum, and it has to be a supermajority in order to move forward with our proposed budget today. This notice was published in all three newspapers of our countywide circulation on 2/2020, was put on social media on 2/2020. I did it that day, just because I like to say that. And it was put on our website on 2/2020. I've heard no comments, questions, phone calls, I don't know, I had to ask you, I think all three of you separately, and nobody's heard anything. Basically, like Wayne said, our valuations increased, so our overall countywide valuation went up almost 4%, and our rural valuation went up a little over 9%. And that's almost exactly what we did with the property taxes, is went up the amount, property tax askings as the percent of increase, according to our publication. So that's what the resolution in front of you today, do you have any questions?
You said the total valuation went up a little over 4%, and rural a little over 9%.
Yes.
They were the numbers in Wayne's.
Yeah, sure.
And Wayne was talking about the valuations statewide and things like that, and if you look at ISAC's web page, they have an over, a financial overview of all the counties. One thing that, that I'm gonna say right now is, in Story County, we're about 80/20, as far as 80% of our property is residential, 20% is rural. That's, that's not the way it is statewide on the average, it's totally flipped, pretty much, so.
I have no questions, so I would make a motion that, no? Oh, public hearing, you're right, thank you.
Okay, so, I would open the public hearing. Anybody who would like to speak to the resolution, would you please come to the microphone? Seeing nobody moving to the microphone, I'll close the public hearing and ask if there are any questions. Then I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2066, that was approval of the fiscal year '21 maximum property tax dollars. Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Olson?
Aye.
Hiddens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Resolution is approved. Anything else?
Later, I'll be back.
You'll be back, thank you.
You gotta look at my ugly mic some more.
And now we have another public hearing, it's the one that was originally on the consent agenda, and that is, if you want to look back at that, it was item eight, consideration of resolution 20.63, entering into a real estate contract for purchase of county property. Mike Cox, Conservation Director. Good morning again.
All right, what we're asking for is approval of this resolution to enter a real estate contract, or contract purchase of one parcel of real estate. This particular landowner approached the county about interest in selling, and we have gone through all of our requirements, approvals, et cetera. He is, the contract that you have in front of you would, would be with Gerald and Carol Ryerson, they are offering this to the county at nearly a 50% bargain sale. So tremendous, tremendous offer, and our Conservation Board has approved this, recommends that the Board of Supervisors approves it. I will show you on the map where this is. It is- It is this property right here. And first, let me zoom out. So, you see Ames is, is the corporate limits of Ames.
Let this off, so you can see better.
No, thanks, Kelly. It won't help. I have to cover my eye and squint. Okay, but thanks.
So, this is Ames. This is the airport right here. This is Kelly. This is the Skunk River, to give you some perspective. This is the parcel that we're referencing right here. Again, if you go south a little bit, go enough, you get to Cambridge right here. This is, like I said, forty acres that is, now, let me zoom in on this a little bit. It is adjacent to a property that we manage called the Skunk River Flats, which is this property here. So, and this is open to public hunting. It is also in the proximity of our Jordan Wildlife Area, which is, which is right here on the other side of the interstate. So, you know, this area repeatedly floods. He has this, this property, the Ryersons have it in CRP program. They have not tilled this for, for corn or soybeans for quite, quite a few years due to the flooding that happens there. One thing I'll also say is, when we did, when we purchased the Jordan property right here, and this is only a part of it that you're looking at, it extends into these other parcels as well. But when we purchased that, or shortly thereafter, what we saw was a number of nearby properties that were enrolled in a state program called IHAPP, Iowa Habitat and Protection Program. And basically, what that does is, is the state will fund habitat restoration, and in exchange for that, the landowner has to open that property up for public hunting. And so, as you can see on this map, these properties right here are in the IHAPP program, as well as these properties right here. And so, it's really becoming a real nice nucleus for, for wildlife habitat and, and outdoor recreation. And so, this parcel right here is the one that we're considering today. It's kind of right between a IHAPP contract piece and then the public piece here that we have. So, so that's what we're asking for. It is a nice property. As I said, again, the current owners are giving us a tremendous bargain sale on it, and Conservation Board urges approval. I will say, as far as the funding goes, this would be a five-year contract with equal annual installments. And the Conservation Board is recommending that this be paid out of the Energy Transfer Fund.
So, there's still CR, is there still time on the CRP?
There is still some year, there is, there is still a timeline on the CRP, and the landowner will receive, the current landowner will receive those CRP payments until we have deed to the property.
Okay. And is that, that one of the reasons we've got the payment scheduled, because of the CRP? Does that coincide? Does the, the payment schedule then is why, that's why we have the payment scheduled, because of the CRP contract?
Correct.
Okay.
And there is, one other thing I should say, should say, is there is no interest being charged to us on this property.
Are there any other questions?
No, just a, a comment about Conservation continues to carry forward this part of your mission, I think, very economically. And, and you've done a really good job at inquiring several different pieces that, yeah, that really are starting to line up there. So, good job for your effort and your tenacity.
Very good. Thank you.
I'll make the motion that we, oh, nope, sorry.
No.
I was just wondering if you had any questions. No, I don't have any questions. I'm sorry.
Okay. It is a public hearing, so I'll now, now open the public hearing. Anybody who would like to address this proposed purchase, please come to the microphone. Seeing nobody moving, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
See, it happened once, I just wanted to be, you know, like my colleague.
Okay.
I will move that we approve Resolution twenty-sixty-three to enter into the real estate contract for the property.
I will second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, Hiddens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your good work.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we have additional items, and Assistant Auditor Markley will return for consideration sending the FY21 proposed budget to publication.
See, I told you you had to see me again.
Mm-hmm.
It's okay. Okay. So, what I would like today is just your verification and, and move forward on the budget, since the, the resolution was approved to, to move forward with what we've proposed. I would like to go ahead and send the notice of the proposed budget to publication. It will, it will publish on three twelve-twenty. Our public hearing is set for three twenty-four at ten a.m. The, the proposed budget does lower the overall rate, property tax rate for Story County by
I would move that we give approval to Assistant Auditor Lisa Markley to send the fiscal year twenty-one budget to publication.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Olson?
Aye.
Hiddens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Please do so. Thank you. Next, we have discussion and consideration of providing three thousand dollars to Volunteer Center of Story County for volunteer recruitment, engagement, and coordination for non-asset-agency related activities. And I don't think we have any documentation on this. It's Department Submitting Board of Supervisors. Supervisor Olson, is this your?
Yeah, this is, is now bringing forward what I had discussed earlier, what we had discussed earlier when we were looking at the asset allocations, is that Volunteer Center is, is proving to be a challenge for the asset board long-term, and the asset funders will have to decide where they actually, where they fit in the great scheme of things, I think is the best way to put it. But this year, the Volunteer Center of Story County had asked for sixty-five hundred dollars and total from Story County. And the issue for them is that they are providing services to a lot of agencies and nonprofits that are not affiliated with asset. And a thank you, Sandra King, for providing that list about who they work with. There are a hundred and twenty, basically, active people, active groups, that they're providing volunteers for. And the ones, I, I don't believe that it was ever been the intent of Story County supervisors in past years, and I would like to hope that it's not the intent of this board, to restrict the fund, at least part of the funding we give them, so that it can only be targeted toward asset agencies. And that is what had come up this year, apparently, the instructions went out from the asset admin team in twenty-eighteen, but was not really known. The director of Volunteer Center was making it, is making it much more clearly known that that's impacting about how she's even able, she feels, to interact with the volunteers and members of the public, who are the ones that she feels that is she's really serving. So, so I went back and looked, that she'd asked for sixty-five hundred. They were given by the asset team, two, or, sorry, the asset volunteers, the recommendation was two thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars. So, there was a gap of thirty-six ninety-eight, as far as what they asked for to be able to serve and versus what would be tied into asset, asset only. So, she'd have to be recruiting for asset-only volunteers.
Again, is, the request was sixty-five hundred?
To Story County.
And the, the allocation was?
Twenty-eight twelve. So, the difference is three thousand six hundred and ninety-eight dollars short. Now, I went with three thousand instead of the thirty-six hundred, because there are a couple of, out of that hundred and twenty.
Excuse me?
Yes.
The request was actually four thousand.
I'm looking at the book, the AF seven B here, Sandra. Can you help me why there's a twenty-five hundred dollar difference there?
That you have, that the request was four thousand.
So, where did this sixty-five hundred on the AF, ABF seven B come from? Story County, sixty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a discrepancy. If you go back to the individual services, it reflects a different amount for each of those.
It was twenty-five hundred for one service and fifteen hundred for the other.
When would that have been the difference from? I mean, in other words, when the asset books came out, did not the asset team look this over to verify that the, the requests were the same?
The four thousand dollar request is in the book.
Okay. But I'm looking at the, ABF seven B, which is what I think most of us who are not really getting down into each nitty-gritty, we take a look at what their requests are. So, so if there's a discrepancy, all right.
I'm looking at ABFB, Story County, I have four thousand.
Volunteer Center?
Do you have the prior year?
Do you have the wrong book?
Oh.
Fiscal year nineteen twenty.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Carla, would you, or Sandra, one of you, take the microphone and give the correct numbers?
Yes, give us the correct numbers, then. Thank you. Okay.
So, for volunteer management or volunteer engagement, the request was twenty-five hundred. And then, for youth engagement, the request was fifteen hundred.
Okay. So, now, with the four thousand minus the twenty-eight, then the request would be basically twelve hundred, let's see, eleven hundred and eighty-eight dollars, the difference. Does that sound right?
That sounds right.
Okay.
So, instead of the three thousand, the difference is eleven eighty-eight?
Difference is eleven eighty.
It's one thousand one hundred and sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Like I said, so. Okay. So, that would, my rationale is still the same, is that the asset is going to have to decide what they're going to do. They're related to Volunteer Center, but I was just trying to make up for what I thought they had asked for, and still, I think, need to ask for, because I don't believe it's our intent to, to have the funding for the Volunteer Center, at least part of our money, constrained by only serving asset agencies. There are twenty-four of them, or is that out of the hundred and twenty on this list?
There's, there are thirty-two.
Thirty-two. Okay. All right. So, not on, if you ran the list, not on their Special Olympics, not on there's several different community organizations from Nevada and from Ames, even Drake University, who's listed on there. I believe, isn't that the Head Start program in Nevada?
That's outside of Story County. Drake University?
Yeah, but the program is here. It's in Nevada. I think it's, I think it's Head Start in Nevada.
I believe it's located in Ames. Drake Head Start is in Ames.
Okay.
Micah Head Start.
Is in Nevada. Okay. All right. So.
Well, I looked, I looked at ABF four, which were the non-asset funded services. And it showed, well, it shows the total there of eighty-six thousand five hundred and ninety-five. And then, I subtracted actually fifteen thousand out of that. One, it's listed, and that's the in-kind contribution, to look at what they actually had dollar-wise, if that makes some sense there. It does, when I was trying, trying to look at that. Then I looked at their ABF seven A and seven B. They have for their self-generated revenues for fiscal year twenty-one, seventy thousand nine forty-five. I think it's off just a little, because I, when I subtracted the, the fifteen thousand, I came to seventy thousand five ninety-five, but that's a minor thing. But they had adopted in fiscal year twenty, sixty-six thousand. So, they've already increased their self-generated dollars from sixty-six thousand to seventy thousand. And then, I also looked at what they had utilized of self-generated dollars to go towards, and I know we're talking about non-asset funded, but I looked at their, what they put in self-generated, generated towards asset-funded dollars in the past. So, for example, like in their actual numbers in fiscal year eighteen, they, they put towards fourteen thousand four hundred and forty-four. Actual in fiscal year eighteen, and actually, I'm just looking at one of the social development, the youth engagement. I'm not looking at both. If I looked at both, that's a much, much higher amount. But when I look at, for example, adopted for fiscal year nineteen, youth engagement, last year, they allocated two thousand seven hundred and ninety-six, and to the volunteer engagement, the other program, not the youth one, they put seven thousand one hundred and fifty-four. This year, they put the three thousand of self-generated to the youth engagement, and zero dollars of self-generated to twenty-twenty-one. So, kind of in my thoughts is, they're already ahead, because they're not putting as much in.
So, are you comfortable with our money being limited out of the hundred-plus, we'll go with, agencies that the Volunteer Center helps to find volunteers for? Are you comfortable with our money only being used to service the asset people?
Well, I guess I look at, you know, what they, what the asset team has proposed. They do have other self-generated dollars that seems to meet the needs compared to last year, just looking at how much money of their self-generated that they're not putting in to the asset program is just kind of how I look here at it.
So, so do you think we shouldn't support their other efforts?
No, I'm just thinking that they've already got the dollars there to support those particular efforts.
We're down to eleven hundred and sixty-eight dollars short, or difference of what they asked for asset to what they received, but an increase in self-generated dollars of four thousand, correct?
Well, I'm.
So, that's, that seems to me, that seems to me to not talk about a need, to not.
It's something to me like they're already ahead.
That some places, but for additional dollars, they're not going to be able to do what they're doing. I don't see that. And I'm a little concerned about going outside of the asset process, because I, I wonder when, when, I think that's a slippery slope.
I think the asset, in my opinion, the asset team made a call that they should have brought back to them, the current Board of Supervisors, all the asset funds.
That's, that's a lot of second guessing.
That's, that's, you know, I think they did. I mean, that's when they came with the budget, which was a proposed budget, and we supported it, when Carla brought the proposed budget to us.
I, I supported it, because I was coming back to ask for additional funding. So, I do understand, I've used, I've pulled the wrong book out. I got it. So, okay, you're right, we're talking about a smaller amount. So, I am very, very concerned about the road, the, the instructions that may be given other agencies in the future, too. But we know Volunteer Center is this very unique thing, you know, that predates asset. And, and to have it, it either needs to be pulled from asset entirely, or we need to figure out if, if all of the entities involved need to say, some of this money can be reserved. some of this money can be restricted to asset, but some of it has got to not be restricted to asset agencies. So I understand, Linda, what you're saying about avoiding the asset process, but 32 out of 100-plus, there's some concern in the community. You surely have heard it yourself about some, you know, there's one, there's, the asset people are the blessed people. The ones who can get approved to be an asset agency are the blessed people. They, they get the money, okay? They have to follow the scorecard, which causes some concerns, the United Way's scorecard. But, but then there's a whole group of people who don't even know where to come for money, and this is a good example.
Right, but, but the non-asset funded that they've got, ABF-4, again, if you, it says $86,595. You know, again, you could subtract out the, the $15,000 or whatever. And I didn't bring the other book too because I had looked at what it was last year.
I've got that one unfortunately or fortunately, yeah.
So, so I think there is already money going towards non-asset funded services because it's all listed here, what all these dollars are going, volunteer engagement to non-asset funded. They've got a specific line item.
But it's not county money.
It says, it was, it says $55,645, you know.
But it's not county money.
No, but it's their self-generated. And I don't know if we always have to have county money goes, go to that. I also looked at their number of partner agencies on there. And, and I get they've got over 100 partner agencies. But I don't think from my conversations with Ann and then I was, had, that's where Sandra sent out some of that information to, sought some clarification, is that each year they are doing a specific volunteer activity or recruitment with each of those agencies. So I, I think that the 100-plus agencies, it's a skewed number. It's numbers that they have worked with, but I don't know exactly how many they have worked with that particular fiscal year. If it's 20, if it's been 75, if it's been 100 and whatever the total is, 130. I don't know that we have that specific data on that. And I see both Carla and Sandra shaking their head that we don't.
Yeah, when I looked at that list, our office is identified there, but in my recollection, when thinking back, I don't recall us ever using the Volunteer Center to recruit volunteers. We have staff that participate in the Day of Caring. And, and so this is a follow-up that I would need to have with Ann is how did our name get on that list? Is it by, by our staff participating in the Day of Caring? I'm just not sure. There, there are a few other entities on that list that are not Story County-related entities. There are a couple over in Boone, I think down in Polk County. So a few of those, you know, that I think...
A few?
Yeah, there are a few. Yeah.
Right, right, yeah. So, okay, so what I'm hearing is you don't want to give them the $1,100.
We just have a list of agencies. If, I don't see the need. From, from the analysis that Lisa's done of their budget, it doesn't sound to me like if their self-generated dollars are up, it doesn't sound like that difference is going to, has negatively impacted their overall budget situation. And I think that's what we need to look at.
And I think like any agency, I mean, my preference is to stay with the asset process. I think it is a good process, and I think when you deviate from that, then you open up a whole other host of issues. At the same time, you never know. I mean, we could have a, hopefully that does not happen, like a natural disaster. And you have to, you know, generate a whole bunch of volunteers to help do that. And you have an agency or agencies that come forth to the county or other organizations for additional funds at that time. I'm hoping nothing that drastic. I just think to say, let's allocate an additional $1,100 at this time when, as I said, the self-generated shows an increase there. That just doesn't seem, it doesn't seem the need is, is imminent right now.
Where agency management, how, agency has a contract for volunteer management, I think it's with RSVP. So that is covered.
So, so.
But there are other things where I know the Volunteer Center has come into, I'm, I'm, that was just, so.
So I, I hear where you're going here, so I'm not going to get a second on a motion if I make it. I just really want to reiterate, since this will be my last ability to really weigh in on asset except for probably the joint meeting in May or whatever, okay, is that I am, I am concerned and there are others out there, and that's what I hope that the board hears. There are others out there that are providing services out in our county who are feeling locked out because they're not approved by asset. It's a very small collective group of human service agencies who get that and others are trying to figure out how in the world do they get money from the county to help provide and be fair to other, other residents. That may be something that we discuss when we talk about the ask too, if you want to go ahead and take care of all of that. But if anybody who is in an asset agency or provides service to asset agencies is locked out, I, I'm concerned for the future.
Well, as we were talking, I just went to the asset tab on our county website and it's Analysis of Social Services. The definition talks about human services agencies. So I, I think that's something we need, you need to consider is that the purpose of asset is to get the human service funding from these five government agencies and, or four in a united way and look at the human services needs.
Even among...
And it's how you define human services. You could define it as anything that helps any person do anything you'd want to, but I think there's kind of a traditional, classic definition we're looking at here. And I'm supportive of what the admin team did there. I think they applied that definition. And I, I, I for one am very supportive of the asset process and our team in this.
I'd like to point out that as, as we even went through the budget process, the number of elected officials who pointed out that Story County has grown. So even within the human services field, there are more providers out there than ever. But if you don't get approved as an asset provider, then you don't get to access that money. So there's unfairness in a couple of different levels. One of them being is there are, like I said before, there's the chosen. And then there's the not. So it's, it's, it's going to be you going forward. We'll drop this, okay? I mean, you know, I...
I just want to make one last, I mean, I'm not part of the asset board and stuff, but I have been an agency that have applied, you know, or for an expanded services. I mean, there's certain criteria, so it's kind of hard for us to sit up here and say, you know, an agency didn't get approved. I don't know what information they provided. Perhaps they didn't meet the specific criteria and that hasn't been fully relayed to us or, or not. Because I, I, I mean, I'm just saying, I don't know because I haven't, I haven't sat at that table with that entity who has submitted that information.
So I have sat up here, when an agency was denied, who's providing services the same, but said, no, we've already got an agency that provides those. We cannot ascertain whether, that your services would not be duplicated services. So they were prevented from being able to get any services or get funding for something else. So, so I, like I said, fine, I won't make the motion because I don't have a second for the motion. We're down to $1,100. I still believe that there need, there's some serious issues that need to be looked at, especially as Story County grows and other people are providing in the marketplace. And, and then this whole issue with Volunteer Center itself needs to be addressed in the future, if it needs to just be pulled out entirely or not.
So as Chair, I'm not going to presume from the discussion that there would not be a motion, so I would give some time and entertain a motion. Okay, hearing no motion then, I would, we can move on. Sandra, Carla, thank you very much for your assistance on this matter. The next item, number three, Discussion and Consideration of Backup Paging Solution, will be moved to next week. So now we have item four, Consideration of Resolution 20.75 for the Technical Assistance to Communities Program for 2020. LeAnn Harder. Good morning, LeAnn. Still warning.
This item is one that normally comes before the board once the budget work sessions have been finalized. It's a program that's been in place for roughly five years now. There were one year that the board did not pass a resolution funding the program. It, it essentially offers up to $3,000 for communities under 2,000 persons. According to the 2010 census, so there's 10 communities that are eligible, for reimbursement for projects that have some form of technical assistance, whether it's capital improvements plan, development, engineering cost for subdivision layout. There's been different variety of projects that have come under this program over the past few years. So again, it's up to $3,000 per community, eligible community. The project would have had to occur during this current fiscal year. They would have until the first of June to submit, I guess actually June 16th, to submit the reimbursement request. So if approved today, I would send out the paperwork to all the eligible communities and then follow through from there. Are there any questions?
How many communities utilized this program last year?
Four, Lisa?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the year before?
$12,544.
$12,000?
$544.
Thank you.
So if you recall back when I brought forward all of the economic development programs that the county had, right, and that technical assistance was discussed here. And I asked at that time if there were any changes that you wanted to make. And no one was interested in making any changes. So then this would be the normal time that this one would launch anyway, and I got contacted by a mayor, the mayor from Collins. And so then it also prompted the activation of the process. So it's been, I think, very well-used as far as effectiveness for the small communities to be able to bring in some. We've only had one kind of hiccup with it and that had to do with some misunderstanding about what the sta, what our own staff would provide versus what if we just given a grant, a small grant and had them hire somebody.
And I remember that conversation. Yeah, you know, by, it seems to, to really help those smaller communities to initiate and get some of that assistance they wouldn't otherwise potentially have access to.
I'm sorry, last year was five. I lied.
Oh, five out of the 10 communities, sorry.
Okay.
I thought you were changing the, I thought you were going to say it was only 5,000. That's what I...
No, no. The amount was the same, but I...
No, it was the same.
Okay.
Do the, I'm just curious, do the same communities kind of apply each year or is it a variety? How does that?
So it looks like Collins has applied three years in a row. Colo, two years of the three. Gilbert, two out of the three. Cambridge, two out of, all three out of three. And then Slater's applied once. Ziering's applied once. So, yeah, we got some, some same and then some others scattered throughout.
Any other questions? I would entertain a motion for adoption of this resolution.
Still moved? Second?
Any further discussion? Heddins?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we have a, we're moving on to department reports and we have a quarterly report by Mike Cox.
Hello again.
Good morning again.
You're a busy person. So, anytime you'd like to, Mike.
Very good. Well, thank you. I think as you know, we, our, our office has been very active on managing initiatives and different projects that we have moving forward and trying to balance a number of different priorities. And you know how some things get delayed and some things get fast-tracked and trying to balance all of that. We have, I believe at current, we've got something like, something like 50 different projects that we're tracking and trying to move forward. And, and we've got, for the most part, three staff working on that, two primary ones and then myself. Ryan Weemold, our Park Superintendent is one of those and that's here with me today. And then Pat Sheehan is another one, our Special Projects Ranger. The two of those, the two of them have just been doing a fabulous job on, on soliciting grants, working with engineers and contractors and, and moving things forward. So we've been busy and we appreciate all the work that, that not only Ryan and Pat do, but, but all of our staff. I think we're at a place right now where we've got just some incredible professional level, very dedicated staff doing a fabulous job. One of those is going to be receiving an award here next week statewide level. And so all doing a very good job. We're, we're very active. So with that said, I'll just go through a couple of, a few of the updates here. No really need to talk about the Tedesco project that we did the bid opening for here this morning, but know that we're, now that we're, I don't know, I'm going to say five years into this project and now we're coming, coming close to, close to completion on it. Heart of Iowa Nature Trail paving, you know, kind of all of our trail project. You know, we, now that we've, we've got a trails position, kind of a trails/natural resource position on staff now that's helping to maintain trails and move projects forward. And, and we've been really successful the last several years in, in finding some outside funding to, to help us reach some of our goals. Very appreciative of that. And again, much to the, the kudos of, of Ryan and Pat for, for doing some fabulous grant writing work. We've been able to, to reach some goals and actually get some, some trail improvements done that we haven't for many, many years. So having said that, the trail paving is one of those. You know, we completed the first phase last year, which would be from Slater to Huxley. Secondary roads is, is moving forward. We're doing a little piece of that on 535th Avenue this spring or at some point this summer. And we'll have hard-surface connectivity then from Slater forward to Huxley. We're working with the DOT and to do Phase Two of the project now. Phase Two is scheduled right now for April bid letting through DOT. And that would be from 560th Avenue to, which is just east of Huxley, to Cambridge. So that would be the next phase. And we received outside funding for that as well, a significant amount, not the whole amount, but a significant amount of outside funding for that. So we're looking forward to successful bids on that like we had this morning. Was very pleased with the bid results from this morning on that trail project. And hopefully we see that carry forward to the Phase Two project as well. In other trail, trail work, as you know, we've been working on the Prairie Rail Trail project at Ziering for a number of years as well. Have a contract awarded. And that contractor began work last year, got a large share of it done, did not get completed before winter came. And so he's going to be, that contractor's going to be completing that this year. And that's the Prairie Rail Trail extension from Highway 65 into downtown Ziering. The lake renovation project at Hickory Grove, been very pleased with how that has been going. Again, that's one of those that's taken a number of years and started with a watershed analysis and watershed water quality improvements and worked with many, many different stakeholders and agencies on that. So we were able to get a lot of the watershed work done. We've been able to get some of the in-park work done as far as shoreline stabilization, gully stabilization. And then last phase here is the lake renovation. Very pleased that we had a very responsive contractor come on for this. Had tremendous staff from the Department of Natural Resources working with, with us and the contractor on, on coordinating this. Got, I'm going to say 99% of the work is now completed. There's just a small amount that yet to, yet to do this spring. The, the gate, if you will, the, the water control gate is, is installed in the dam and we're just waiting on a final dam... And we're just waiting on a final dam inspection and a little bit of, a little bit of more earthwork there in the basin around the beach area and boat launch area before we, before we stamp that project. And, but we're planning to have everything, everything done this spring. And the park will be open as normal coming this spring. So that's what we're hoping for. Hope that Mother Nature cooperates and fills the lake up as rapidly as it has filled it up in the past, so.
Especially when you're trying to drain it down and it kept filling.
Exactly, exactly. We fought Mother Nature for a while. Another thing that, that you're familiar with is the potential of a cabin at Dakens Lake. We've had that, these conversations. And so we've taken the, the feedback and our conversations and I've done some evaluations. And I intend to meet then individually with the three of you and discuss what I found, hear any more of your questions, comments on that, and before we move forward with it.
I'm glad to hear that. I clearly have a big concern.
Yeah.
Not only about a cabin, you know, we've got so much that needs to be done already. You've got so many, so many avenues of projects already that why do we take that on? Second of all, it's not going to be the sustainability that the previous board had asked for. And then third of all is Dakens Lake the right place to begin a cabins program? So great. Okay, I look forward to having coffee with you.
Yeah, yeah. Very good, very good. Another one that we contracted for on engineering basis was a conceptual review of the lowhead, what we refer to as the Hannums Mill Lowhead Dam mitigation project. And I'm very appreciative. We have tremendously successful public hearing at the library. Very appreciative for, for you folks for attending that meeting. We had tremendous turnout at it. So our engineers now have, have issued a draft report giving some options on what to move forward with, and we'll take that to the conservation board and see what, what avenues we'd like to move forward with on that. They really researched two options. One is full removal of the, of the lowhead dam and placement of some what's, what's referred to as rock riffles in the stream. And the other option is, again, a full removal, but, but without the rock riffles. And so very minor differences, but significant price difference in the two. And I think very encouraged, at our public hearing, we heard it loud and clear from the community and the members that were there, that they were very receptive to moving forward with a cost-effective project that mitigates the safety concern and allows the fish passage. And those were the, really the two primary drivers with this project to mitigate the safety issue with that dam. And so I think that, I think that the concepts we have explored a little bit really are, reflect that interest. Army Corps of Engineers, not a lot to say there. They haven't done any work over the winter. They're in the process, as we've discussed earlier, of, of finishing the cultural review or the archaeological review. That will happen as soon as those, those folks can get back on the ground here this spring. As far as our EE program, have, I'm curious, we've been doing some common ground, it's called common ground recordings. And basically it's kind of storytelling, someone to come and, and individuals to come and tell a story about the experience in nature they had or, or some kind of story that, that gives a little bit of personal perspective on, on involvement with nature. And it's been going very well. We're, we're doing it, co-opping it with the Ames Library and other organizations. We'll be recording it, we've recorded 18 sessions already and we'll be doing more. We'll be doing more at the Ames Reads Leopold event coming up here. And so that's, that's a real nice, real nice thing to be, to be able to do. Some of the other things you'll see in the report, some of the other programs that we've done, snow shoeing events, we just recently, we did actually get some of those events in this year, but, but we had enough snow for some, but we had to cancel some as well. This really was a fair, knock on wood, a fairly mild winter that some of our normal winter programming we weren't able to do. But all in all, very good. We, we cosponsored a trout stocking event at Ada Hayden where we were there and provided some, helped provide some fishing poles and staff support, et cetera, for youth to fish. That is one of the, in fact, I think that is the largest trout stocking event that the Department of Natural Resources does, does. And there are normally over 200 people in attendance there. Tremendous event. We get a lot of exposure and so very pleased with that.
I saw a lot of posts on Facebook with that one.
What's that?
A lot of, saw a lot of social media, Facebook posts on the trout stocking at Ada Hayden.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's a super event. Jaxx gets involved with that on a sponsorship level and the Ames Anglers and several other groups really get behind that and support it. Another one that's been a fun event for us to cosponsor and get some awareness and get some people out to, to our parks. Dakens Lake in particular has been our annual ice fishing derby that Dakens, or, excuse me, that Ziering Fire Department puts on. And this year was a tremendous year as well. Weather worked well. And last year it was canceled due to what, due to late conditions. But this year there were 240 people that entered the tournament or the derby. And it's just a nice weather, nice day. And I think the, the fire department was very enthused with the turnout. So again, a nice event that we're able to support and get some more people to some of our parks that maybe normally wouldn't. So with that, I'd take any questions you may have.
I don't have any questions. I think you've got a lot going on. I appreciate the narrative that you provide. And as Laura said, I look forward to our conversation on Dakens Lake. I know a number of us submitted questions to you in your, for you to do kind of your analysis. And I look forward to finding out what you have found out since then.
Yeah, sounds good.
So I have something that's not related to the report, but thank you. And I love the sentences, you know, how I just like to go down and say the public can read all of this. So I had a conversation with Tim Garten, who's an Ames City Council member, on Friday. We were at an event together over the lunch hour. And he just happened to make a comment to me afterwards about, we were talking about bicycling season. He's a big bicyclist, okay? And he said, have you ever been to Ankeny and seen that great area that they have for bicyclists? There is kind of a welcoming for all the bikers. And I said, yeah, it's been a long time, but et cetera. He said, it wouldn't be nice if we could do something like that here? So my comment back to him was, well, I don't know, would Tedesco be a place to do something like that? So I would like to refer to you that, like, you know, that, that was the sum total of that conversation, okay? All right, I didn't pledge anything. I just thought that maybe if you wanted to talk to, okay, I see that, okay, to Keith Abrams about that, who was the head of Parks and Recs. Are you already nodding here, like maybe this has come up before?
I guess if I was familiar with that part, that you're referring to Ankeny.
Okay. So anyway, I'd just like to refer that to you for future conversations between, you know, Parks and Rec and conservation, if there was any opportunity for them to come in, especially, I said that there's plans now in the CIP to build bathrooms out there, which is usually a welcoming thing.
Right.
So I refer that to you.
Okay. Well, yeah, we'll, we'll consider that. The reason I was looking at Ryan, he, he attends, attends on our behalf, a Des Moines area MPO bicycle and roundtable discussion. It's every month. And so Ryan's really our, our pedestrian trail expert and has all those connections. So we'll take a look at that and see what Ankeny has and, and chat with Mr. Garten.
Okay. Thank you. That's it for me.
I have no questions because you answered all my questions the other day. Mike has done some good work on the cabins. And so I think you'll, I got a kind of preview of that. So I think you'll find that there's a lot of information for us to look at there. And it does compare to cabins and other county park systems, which is kind of what we wanted to see as well. So I think it'll be useful to us. So I want to thank you for getting on that so quickly.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other reports. Leann Harder for review of public comment and discussion and direction regarding the draft capital improvements plan.
Good morning.
No, good afternoon.
Oh, yeah, that is true. It is past the 12.
My phone popped up that time. I'm trying to actually log in while I'm talking. I don't have a PowerPoint for this, but I do for the next item. The draft capital improvements plan was discussed by the board in late January and put out for public comment. Copies were sent to all the city halls and libraries throughout Story County, as well as put on our website and then, and a comment sheet for individuals to fill out and send back to the county, whether handwritten via the mail or email, also on our website and then through social media and press release. I have not received any public feedback or any public comment, whether even just to comment back. I don't know if any members of the board have received anything. I did not, I made sure we tested the forms online, those worked. So I'm here to report we have no public input. So the process from this point forward, I'll be back to, for the board to take action on March 24th is the, on March, March 24th after the budget's been approved. Do you, are there any questions for me?
No, I'll just add that when I was out and I've spoken to various groups, I did direct them to our website and stuff. And so it wasn't from lack of additional outreach to say that it is up there for folks to, to look at.
I guess.
And maybe they did look at it and just didn't have a comment, so.
Another, so I generally do leave the comments out there for like the next week so that if we did get public comment, I could present that on the budget meeting. If you would like me to do that, I can continue that practice and take it down in a week. So in case someone hears this today, wants to still see it, then they can still provide input. But I'll go with what the board's pleasure is on that.
It doesn't hurt to put them up. I mean, you know, you've, you've not gotten a whole lot of them in the past.
I think in the past few years, I, we've received one, all told.
The document that was attached to the agenda, does it have all the changes from the budget here, the budget work session?
It should, yes.
Okay. I didn't have a chance to look at it.
Yeah, that's what was.
But we have another opportunity to double check that before the 24th.
Yeah, when I came back from leave, this is what was ready to be put on the agenda.
Okay. And I think Mike and Joby did significant work on that during the budget sessions, so. So March 24th, if there's any, any things that we noticed that maybe didn't get caught, we should get to you before then.
Yeah.
Probably a week before then so you can get that set on the agenda. Okay. Any other thoughts then?
No, thanks.
Thank you.
She wants direction.
You want direction?
To, if you receive any comments from the public, go ahead and post them and please just, you know, let us know that we could go on and find them.
Okay.
And see you on the 24th. How's that sound?
That's fishing direction?
That is.
Okay.
I will leave it out there for comment.
Thank you. And then discussion and direction regarding 2020 Citizen of the Year Award.
Economic development.
Oh, economic development, I'm sorry. I crossed that one out too fast. Economic development first, then Citizen of the Year.
I have a brief presentation for the board, just as a, just a review of the programs. And this is something I bring to the board every springtime. I'm actually a little bit behind on this one, but again, that was because of leave. But it is just to bring a kind of awareness of what the programs are and then have an opportunity for you to let me know if there are any possible revisions that need to be, that you've seen may need to be built into the process or the policies. I will bring those back at a future meeting. And this is the last time so that that can be adopted and then we hold the preapproval meeting, or pre-application conference meeting. I'm going to go over that in some detail. There are three elements of our urban renewal area program. We have the plan itself, the urban renewal plan, Story County Urban Renewal Area. Then we have Chapter Eight in the Code of Ordinances. That is the chapter that specifically defines the properties from which the tax valuations are, are received. So those are the wind turbines, veteran equipment, all those specific parcels. And then we have the economic development process and policy. So these three all function together and are the components of the program that we have. The urban renewal plan was adopted first in November 2011. It's the first piece of the puzzle that came out. And then the, the revisions to the Code of Ordinances as we identified the properties from which the evaluations would, would come. And then the policies came last, kind of that order. We see this, it comes before you every fall generally as the projects that the, the smaller account, all the communities can receive funding for if we run that type of program annually. That's what that element is. The Code of Ordinances, I've already talked about, that's the listing of all the parcel numbers. And that's Chapter Eight. We really don't amend this very often. Last time we amended it was, we, I think we had eight new wind turbines, eight or 10 come online, so we would amend those in. I think that was maybe three years ago. Then the policies and procedures or process and policies. These were originally adopted October 2012. Again, annually I bring this to see if there's any necessary changes or revisions. And today is not necessarily to talk about those changes or revisions, however, like, Laura, if you provide me some, I'll share those for the other two to hear. Just if you have some, if, Leann, I know I'll have some, work with me and then I can get them in draft format and bring them back for a full conversation for the board. Is that clear?
Yes.
Okay. So the next steps, can I just identify any additional modifications to the process and procedures? I'll bring it actually for a formal action on October, or, October, March 31st. March 24th will be a review of them so that you have an opportunity to see them and then formal action on the 31st. The reason I'm trying to push this along to according to our current policy is that pre-application meeting has to occur prior to the third Tuesday of April. So I'm looking at tentatively Monday, April 13th for that meeting. And I need some time to get that notice out to the communities. With that, are there any questions?
I don't. I think you've gone through the kind of the next steps in the timeline and I'll make sure I review again and provide you any input.
I do, Laura did share with me two potential changes that she'd like the board to consider. Again, it's not for discussion today, but then as you're thinking of your changes to, under the tax increment financing goals, objectives and strategies, there's an item number four. The suggestion is to, rather than, to amend it so it reads, do you want to say this?
Sure, okay.
Do you have it? That might be better if it comes right from you.
Okay. So item number four says we don't ever give money to a, to a private entity. When we added in housing last year, I brought this forward last year, but there was not, there was not interest in doing it this time. I'm bringing it forward for thought and consideration again this time, is that often what happens with housing projects is that there is kind of a, there's a rebate sometimes to the developer that, of a project. So the text I proposed, and I sent it to Leann so she can send it out and, you know, for everybody, okay, is to change this to say to, we wouldn't give to a private entity except as a rebate to a private entity engaged in a construction or rehabilitation project creating housing for people with incomes 60% or below the county's median income. It's just something to consider again this year of that. It would help in some possibilities of going ahead to facilitate development of housing for low income, so.
Can we only amend this at this time of year?
No. You can amend it anytime.
I'm thinking we've just commissioned a house. I'm thinking we've just commissioned a housing study and we don't know what the recommendations are going to be in that. If there were a recommendation for something like that, could we go back and amend at that time? We could, we can bring it up anytime to amend.
Yeah.
I'd rather wait till we have our housing study to look at.
The reason I bring it forward this time of the year is so that we can reach out, if there is a desire to do the urban renewal area programs and open up for grants through the communities, they have to follow these guidelines. This ties, this is the, this is the criteria under which they submit, so.
Yeah.
So it's a matter of timing.
It's a matter of time.
I understand, okay.
So-
Yeah, we haven't, we're, we're kind of, it's a cart.
Yeah.
It is.
Right now.
So as a, as a reminder to that, for these applications that LeAnn is doing this timeline process for, which is a step one, is that what we've got is $161,700, okay? But this is more related to a project itself. I'm giving you them all because this is my last time to run through this, okay? So, yes, going on, or you want to do the next one, or?
Yeah, so number, then there would be a new number six. And it would just state organizations that have not been, that have not been closed out, that have not closed out their projects. Project funds granted in 2008 or bef, 2018 or before are not eligible to apply for 2020 funding.
That's in response to some, a couple of entities, at least to, last time we kind of discussed this, still had funding, they hadn't received reimbursement for.
I think that might be a good idea. Is there a way to, and just since we're on that though, is there a way to generalize that, so it doesn't have to be changed every year to have the year, to say if it's, if you received funding and haven't closed out in two years, you're not eligible for next year funding, or something like that? So it's standing, rather than having to go back every year and change the day, the year?
One year is probably not, is necessarily not going to be good. And I'm thinking about Story City and North Park. And they had some flooding, and then they had to come back and get the extension, okay? So we expanded that project, we gave them a different due date. So this would just be, this is, this, this is talking about those communities more that are going two years out without any grant, without any, any approval of us to go that far out. And it's like, hey, you, so every year you just have to be shoving in the date one year forward. But to limit them to the previous year might be too tight.
No, I was saying two years. I was saying do exactly what your, what your language says, only generalize it so you don't have to go back in and change the plan every year. Do you understand what I'm saying, LeAnn?
So what I can do is, what I'm going to do following today's meeting is put the comments I've received here into the draft Word document, I'll send it to you guys for your, for your review and then to make your own specific changes. And I can word it both ways. I can, I can play with it a little bit.
Appreciate that.
And Lisa Markley has some, may have some ideas about your wording too, and say, yeah, that works, but.
Well, and I, I would like, if you would put down what Loris originally wanted and then what others, what kind of the conversation, the suggestion, one, it's just easier for me with a visual, is to know exactly what, what we're looking at.
And then this last one is actually within the process, the process themselves, it's under step two. And Loris, I'm not quite sure where you're saying put this, maybe right in this area?
So yes, it's under step two, and where, where's your cursor? Hold on a second.
Right in here.
Okay.
So what this-
It's above only, where it says only one application is allowed per organization. And it's after, submits more than one grant application containing, yes, so it's after that, you're right, where the line that says submit more than one grant application, up one. There we go, the start of that. I would recommend saying, one grant application containing one specific project, period, or comma, listing two or more projects by identifying them as different elements of a much broader conceptual plan, and or listing more than one project with or without, or listing more than, oh, sorry, two, two or more projects, without notification of priority, with or without notation of priority, will disqualify the application. Sorry, I'll, I could read that again. So it says, if an organization submits more than one grant application containing one's, I don't think that is the right place, though. I'm so sorry to see that. What it's really is, I'm, I'm eliminating the opportunity that we were offered last year by Collins to have two projects and one grant application lumped under a broader conceptual plan. And then when staff called the Collins mayor, he then tried to make notation of their priorities. So-
But I think it was handled okay.
Yeah, but we don't want to tell, again, I mean, it never, I don't think it ever dawned on anybody that they would try that.
Okay, but they accept the answer when, when LeAnn got back to them and said, no, that's three grant applications, you've tried to put into one.
Well, that isn't quite what the answer was back. She asked for prioritization. Do you remember? And then I asked the county attorney about this, and the county attorney said, well, the way we worded it, I want, I'd rather, you know, be inclusive than not. And so they went with just the one. So I've written language once we find where we should insert it.
What was the language again that you were, that you were saying? I'm sorry.
Okay. Only one, only one grant application containing one specific project is allowed per grant cycle, okay? Listing two or more projects by identifying them as different elements of a much broader conceptual plan, and or listing more than one or two projects with or without notation of priority, will disqualify the application. That's what we would show.
I guess my little confusion is the sentence before, because it says only one application is allowed per organization per grant cycle.
So Collins sent one application with three projects.
Right, right, right. So, so really, it's not an organization, if an organization submits, to me, the second line should not be if an organization submits more than one grant application, because they've already, they've already said you can only submit one grant application. I think what you're wanting, if I'm catching you right, I think what you're trying to get is, within that one grant application, you can only do one project.
Right.
That's what I think you're trying to-
That's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah.
And because this long letter came with Collins's that talked about this conceptual plan, as it all was one project.
Right, right. No, and I get what you're saying, it's just, it just doesn't sound right when you say you can only have one application, and then we, the next line says, if you submit more than one application.
Okay.
That just does not, that doesn't sound right to me.
I have no, I'm not married to the language here. And now that I'm reading it myself.
You could take out that sentence, sentence, and just somehow just say, only one application is allowed per organization, and you're only allowed to submit one project, one specific project in that application.
Or something, how do you wordsmith it? But I think that's what you're trying to get, to get that.
Would you like me to, to wordsmith that and with?
However, that's fine, yeah.
Yeah, I think it could be.
Got it.
I just don't want any confusion when you're saying, well, you can only do one application, and then you turn the next sentence saying, well, you, if you do two, it's like, well, but I thought I could only do one.
You don't need to say that.
Yeah, you don't need to say, you don't need to say that you're doing two.
I got you. It could be worded better. So project, yeah, well, LeAnn and I'll get together right then. That's the concept though.
I think that would clarify it out, what is, what is meant, so.
Okay, we will work on that.
So.
So what my plan is for today, hopefully to get this to the three of you for feedback. I know it's a short timeframe, but by the 16th, which is Monday, if you could get me your comments back so I can compile them for the agenda for the 24th, I will be out of the office significantly that Tuesday and then out for the next couple of days. So that allows me to get to Ethan Anderson for his review as well, prior to the board meeting. And then again, the, the meeting on the 24th is discussion only and direction for changes to staff, and then the final decision will be on the 31st, which does give me two weeks to get that notice out.
All right, thanks, LeAnn.
Okay, so the direction you're seeking is to get the changes to us?
Sure. It's more a direction to you guys, to get changes back to me, I guess.
Yeah.
It says direction on here, so that's why I said, okay. Proceed with your schedule, as you just gave it to us.
A request from you guys to get information back to me.
Next is discussion and direction regarding the Citizen of the Year Award.
So this normally does come before the board annually in January. I think you're well aware of the delay, so we're, we're doing it now. It's a program that was started a few years ago. The memo does go over the history of it. I'm not going to go into great detail on that. I do want to point out county employees and elected officials are not eligible to be nominated, current county employees and county elected officials. We're bringing, I'm bringing it to you to see if this program you want to do again this year. If so, are you still okay with the awards during National County Government Month? Seems to work out well to have a celebration as part of that. We do try to keep it secretive and surprise the applicant, and so far, we've had good success with that. So what we would do is, following today, if the board does want to continue the program, release it today or tomorrow morning with the schedule, social media, press releases, set a date prior to March 27th for applications, nominations to be submitted. In the past, Alyssa, Deb, so it'd be Sandra and I would review, and then send them on to recommendation for the board, and then the board would select the applicant. And we do have one that was nominated last year that was not recognized, that the direction to them was, we would keep that as part of the nomination for this year.
Direction to them being the person who was nominated?
No, no.
Oh, thank you.
That individual does not know.
Okay.
The individual that nominated, he or she.
I see. So my question is now, can, please remind us, who was on the selection committee last year?
Sandra, Deb and myself.
It's not Sandra.
No, Alyssa.
But it's her and Alyssa, okay.
Sandra, you're there.
So, okay. So, so knowing that Sandra is new, now I mean Sandra, okay, all right. Did you want to add one more person from another part of the county, or, you know, the, the other thing is, is, I mean, there's, obviously Sandra will provide a new set of eyes and saying, oh, that's cool or not cool. We've had some interesting applicants, I mean, really, yeah.
You think we're good?
You're good?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Unless Lisa wants to join in.
I'm fine with, with the three. I think, what, if you add a fourth, then you potentially could get caught in a tie area.
True, yeah.
True.
A three or a five.
Okay. Yeah. See, my math is just not working today. All right.
I'm comfortable with what you've put in your, your memo. Anything else from anybody?
No.
Okay. Proceed and thank you. And thank you for those of you who will serve on the committee. Next item is not a discussion and direction, it is consideration.
I should probably put additional items.
That means you would want a motion.
Well, and, and so this is item on Sunshine Week. It's celebrated third week in March, which last year we did, the board hosted a coffee for media contacts. That day is the same day as Ames Day at the Capitol this year, so I will not be here. So I was trying to think, and honestly, the attendance was not that great last year with that coffee. I'm not saying that, it's not a reason we should not repeat it, but there was a lot of work that went into preparing for that, that I won't be here to be able to do. So I was trying to think outside the box. At the minimum, I would suggest the board, have me do a thank you notes to my, my contact list, press contact list, and have the, each of you sign it as a thank you for those members that, you know, respond and help us with gang messaging out. And then a proclamation as well. That would have to be next week at the board's, board. So it really is just kind of what, what you want to do, if you want to revisit. This was added to the communications plan last year, so incorporated December 2019 as well. We're still trying to evolve this and what it means. So I'm here to get feedback.
I have some, but do you guys want to go first?
Well, so you said in the past, you've done it during that, that particular week, is what you're-
We did, that Tuesday, right.
That Tuesday.
And we've never done a proclamation. This is the first year that there would be a proclamation.
Gotcha. I also know, I believe that's also spring break-
Yeah, it is.
Week, which would also just limit potential, yeah, I don't know how many you've had in the past. I know you just said limited last year, I don't know.
Very, very small amount.
And I don't know if that would have any bearing on anything right now, but I just wanted to just point that out, that that is also that particular week.
Have we done any other strategies to get people here? How many ti, how many times have we done this?
Last year was the first year for the coffee.
That was the first year?
That was the first year. And that was the first year it was in the communications plan, too.
So I've been struggling and thinking about this a lot over the last three days. Sunshine Week is about government information being open to the public. It's not just about the media, okay? So I thought that LeAnn gave a good suggestion last year, we'll invite the media, but we only had a couple people from, you know, it was just from the Tribune that showed up, and not that we weren't happy to see them, but we can look around now, we don't see any media. I remember the days when there were sometimes as many as four of us here, okay? And so I don't, I, I'm fine with not doing a coffee. So then looking at the proclamation. So I thought about, well, I'd rather do a proclamation about Story County supporting Sunshine Week in the broader concept. Then I received some information on Friday from Alyssa that made me think a little bit. So my, I have a question for both of you. Did either of you go to Alyssa and ask that we look at our, our open, open meetings and information, Chapter 22 information, to reduce the type, reduce the time people would be searching for free, et cetera, to make some changes on it? I'd like to know that before.
I don't know what you're talking about.
I understand that. Okay, so last, last Friday, Alyssa and I ended up having this conversation. And Alyssa told me she was working on the, the Freedom of Information Policy. And among the changes she wanted to bring forward is, right now, we give people at least one hour of free searching for documents, et cetera. And Alyssa told me she was going to bring it down to 15 minutes and try and bring it-
That's incorrect, it was 30 minutes.
30 minutes, okay.
Correct. And what happens is, we need to review this policy, so we're going to change it back over to the Director of External Operations. I did take on that responsibility when that position was vacant. At the time, we look at the policy, we look and, and see, are there any recommended changes? So I told Supervisor Olson that I looked at the fees, the schedules. While looking at those, we can set reasonable fees. Now, understand, this is not for elected officials, this is only for departments underneath the board's purview.
Okay.
So I do have a few recommended changes. They'll be brought to the board, the board can discuss and make, make any changes to the draft, it'll go out for seven day review. You know, there were things that were missing in there. There's only three recommended changes. Nobody has seen a draft, other than Sandra and-
But the changes you told me you were thinking about doing are very Sunshine Week unfriendly. That's where I'm headed here.
Okay, we're, we're at a disadvantage right now-
I understand.
Because we haven't even seen what it is that you're arguing against. So I would ask that we wait to have the conversation until we can actually look at a draft? Because I don't know what you're talking about.
I understand that.
And I don't think this is the time to have a debate on something that two out of three of the supervisors aren't, don't know what is going on.
So that got my concern, and I thought about this last year. And there have been several instances where, from my position, we have not been Sunshine Week friendly. That's where I was headed. I didn't want to discuss today this. There have been several incidences that we have, we as a county, various decisions made in the county, et cetera, we've not been very Sunshine Week friendly. So headed into the conversation today here, LeAnn, is I'm thinking a proclamation that actually talks about what we're going to do to support Sunshine Week, that the things we as a county are going to do, and individual employees, to see that we're- to see that we're always thinking about getting information to the public and making it easily accessible. And I can give you some of those examples if you want to hear them now. About, but, I mean, it was just very easy for me to pull up in my mind some of the issues that have come up in the last year that have not been supportive of Sunshine Week. So if you want to do a proclamation, I'm urging that we do a proclamation that talks about, we support Sunshine Week, and reaffirms to the staff about the types of decisions we make, or we don't do anything at all. I would feel like a hypocrite doing something personally that would say something about the media and sunshine when the media doesn't come. We've had problems with accuracy with the media that does cover us in the last year. And then, knowing what has happened at various times during this year about decisions that have been made that were not sunshine friendly. I just, they're not illegal, I want to make that very clear, but were not sunshine friendly. And then hearing we're, within a couple weeks, there's going to be now suggested changes coming forward that once again will make it, if I understand some of what she's suggesting, make it more expensive for people, will make it less sunshine friendly. So this is obviously passionate for me. It's one of the reasons I ran for the Board, as you all well know. So I'd just rather do nothing at all to observe it than to do things that were, in my opinion, hypocritical. Supervisor Hens, do you have any thoughts?
Well, I haven't seen...
No, I understand, but that's just one part. I mean, I can start listing off some of the things that have been done that clearly are not public-friendly decisions that were made, which is what Sunshine Week is all about.
Okay, and some of that, I'm not quite sure what you're referring to, but...
I'm happy with him, but...
That's fine. I'm just saying is, I don't, I mean, I have nothing in front of me. I'm just hearing about your concerns here on Sunshine Week and stuff. So it's, you know, it's kind of hard for me to give a response to what Alyssa may be proposing when I have no clue what she may be, what she may be proposing and stuff. I do think, you know, I think, I know I'm for, and most people are, for open government. But there, I also recognize, and I have it from other State Departments of, you know, when people would seek documents, there is time, staff time involved in that. Again, I don't know what is being proposed. So I'm, I don't know what we're, I don't know what she's looking at, or whatever, to make a comment on that. I do think that you can still recognize Sunshine Week. You're right, we don't have press that comes in, and we have had to make some corrections, or not with the press that comes, or the press. But they are watching when they, you know, obviously, they're going back and listening to the video or watching the video with it, or listening to the audio. I know I've had some other constituents who have listened to the audio or the video of our meetings here. So they are being, you know, I feel like we're being open and available for that.
Because this one occurred since you've been here and at the table, because I confronted it. The water shop, the watershed group. So some members of that group making the decision that they were not going to post agendas on the website because they were too new, and all they had to do was post it downstairs, even though we post our agendas on the website. It led to us having to change the social media policy because a decision was made by some department heads that they didn't want to do what we've always done. That's not sunshine friendly. It doesn't break any law, that's right. The law says you only got to slap that thing downstairs. But it wasn't social friendly. The fights that occurred, the fight that occurred about the whole trying to discuss the ICE contract at the Board Table, that was not Sunshine Week friendly. We are not, the county as a whole are not Sunshine Week friendly. In fact, another thing that, where there was, there was conflict behind the scenes had to do with those information meetings about the budget. There's now a bill at the legislature, the state legislature, saying that budget discussions have got to be noticed as an open meeting. So clearly, it's just not us, but there's a bill down there. I'm just saying that Sunshine Week, to celebrate it and honor, honor partners who aren't, I don't think, here to the benefit of what we really are doing, combined with our own internal actions in the last year, call for something different. A proclamation that says, we're going to buy in, to making sure that the members of the public get information, and we're going to think about, how can we get that information out to them, and et cetera.
Well, I think LeAnn could draft a proclamation talking about Sunshine, you know, Sunshine Week, and kind of what that means, that we can review or we can put input on, just like with anything else that we do. You know, I disagree with some of your comments. You're right, you could say, well, gosh, something was just posted on a board downstairs when we do have other outlets, social media and stuff. But that is still falling within the legalities. And is there always more you can do? Certainly. But I don't want to discredit or say that someone has done something inappropriate when they actually did what was required of them.
They did the minimum, and Story County does not go for the minimum.
It may be the minimum, it may be the maximum, or whatever. I just think that that looks poorly to say that, that, to me, it just kind of seems like you're kind of disparaging the individuals that did that. They did what was required. Could they have gone beyond, could have? You always, you always could do beyond, or whatever. I'm just not going to discredit somebody for still following the legality of the law.
I was just shocked by that. But, okay. So anyway, that's my point, is that I don't want to be a hypocrite, okay? But if you guys want to work on something, you know, but knowing then that this, whatever we're going to discuss about these changes is also coming up, so, yeah, I...
Here's my thought about this. Sunshine Week runs from March 15th through 21st. This is March 3rd. Proclamation would have to be on our agenda for next Tuesday, March 10th, to be done on time. From the discussion you're having here, some things you've brought up, I think you're really talking about some things that are policy decisions. And I would hate to put that on LeAnn to meet those expectations in a general proclamation. I don't, I think that probably some of the things you're talking about would require, like are more policy-like and would require more decisions. I think trying to just say, you weren't, you maybe didn't like the way something went, but you weren't, it wasn't unanimous, so let's put it in a proclamation, is kind of problematic right now. That's all. If you want a general proclamation, if we want to do a thank you to media, I think we can do that. But try to get it, to getting all of those issues shoehorned into a proclamation doesn't seem like the way to make decisions.
Well, I agree with you on that. I'm not advocating that they go in there so much, is that the proclamation be an affirmation that staff supports it, and staff will make decisions based upon reaching out to the public and thinking about practical ways to always make sure they're communicating accordingly, because Sunshine Week is more than just the Chapter 21 and Chapter 22. So yes, I'm not asking that we make those decisions, I just, I just, yeah.
I think some of the things that falls in and that we'll be working on the rest of this year and will continue to be ongoing is our new mission statement and our core values. And I think that's what leads to providing that outreach. Because we have identified what we, as a county, want to be, and what our goals are, and what we anticipate, or what our focus is, is to live by within those core values. So I think that's where, where you get some of that staff buy-in as well. When you say you want to be open and you want to have the best services, and, you know, recognizing the community's quote as a whole, what does that all mean? That's where we all need to have an understanding, have a grasp, be able to iterate exactly what those core values are and what those mean, and uphold all of those core values.
I think that's an excellent decision, because I think you just hit the nail on the head. It's having the buy-in of staff, and if you pull that back towards the mission, I think you get that. I think you'll have the discussions, and people will understand, you know, there'd be a greater understanding of engaging our communities, engaging our citizens, than if we, in a top-down manner, put it in a proclamation or put it in a policy from the Board. I think you just, you just turned it around to, in a way that makes a lot of sense to me. I think what we do is, we communicate in our mission work, that one thing we want to be looking at is how we greater involve the residents that we are serving, and to do that through greater communication. So, do we, do we want a resolution, or do we want a resolution, excuse me? Do we want proclamation, thank you? Or do we, do we want to try to fold it into mission work, or do we want to do something else? I like folding it into the mission work better than I do a proclamation at this time.
I think that's, okay.
And it's nothing against you, LeAnn, it's...
No, it's nothing at all against LeAnn. I just want to put LeAnn in a bad spot and try to be pleasing everybody. And I didn't, I think we had good, sufficient direction on this to give direction to you. So I think we...
The communications plan is always just a template for strategies we may or may not take on throughout the year. So actually, staff has plenty of things to keep staff busy.
Okay. When you put this on the agenda as a consideration rather than discussion, were you looking for a motion?
No.
Okay. So probably should have been a labeled discussion. So if it's a discussion and direction, I guess the direction would be not to prepare anything for Sunshine Week this year. Sufficient? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, you're bringing this to us. Upcoming agenda items? Does anybody have anything that they want to suggest for next meeting? Besides, we've heard several things today we will be talking about. Is there anything in addition?
I don't for the next meeting. I do just have a question for the 17th, as LeAnn mentioned of that being Ames Day at the Capitol. I don't know if any of you are planning on going down there for Ames Day, if we've generally had a representative down there, which I think at times we have. And then if so, then my question would be, would you have more of a limited agenda on the 17th, or what? So I don't know if that's... No, I know the next meeting is the 10th, but I'm just saying is, if we are gone, the, if, if, if someone is down in Des Moines, I wasn't sure if, if, what has been usually done on Ames Day at the Capitol from the county level? That's, that was my question.
Yeah, so, since my time on the Board, at least one, if not all three Supervisors have gone down, okay? But the ability to go, whether it's all three, has been really tied into what else is going on and what they've scheduled, and who they've scheduled those discussions with, okay? I'm not going to go, we have Story County Housing Trust Fund, and I need to go to that because we're dealing with that, trying to get that money out. So I've already notified Drew Camp that I'm not going.
Yeah, and I hadn't, and I am fine to be here, because I don't know that each year it's always been on a Tuesday. I know this time it's on a Tuesday is their Ames Day. And, you know, some of it just depends when a room or the retunda or whatever is available. That's how they get it. That's why I was just seeking clarification.
I remember a couple times it's been on a, what, do, once it was on a Wednesday, right, LeAnn? Yeah, it was a Tuesday, because I remember only, and I might have been the only one that got to go. But anyway, so, yeah.
The only things I've seen so far about what's going to happen is there are some meetings with, starting with Senate Minority Leader Janet Peterson at one. Then there's another, a few other leadership meetings. I was thinking if I could get out, if we have a short meeting that day and get out of here at noon, that's not going to be a short meeting, is what Shelley's saying, so we're probably not going to make it.
Oh, it's going to be a day or...
It's going to be a day or...
A full on the 17th?
What do we got?
Yeah, please.
It's the first reading of the ordinance for the pumping of sub systems.
Oh, that's right.
I can tell you one more thing, that there are a lot of people who are going to come in here.
Okay, so, so we better just say we're probably not going to make it down there.
Yep, yep, nope. It's good to know. Good thing we had the discussion, we know.
Yeah.
Do we ever, let me ask you a question. Do we ever change our, a regular meeting from a Tuesday to another day?
No, we just do limited or...
Never have, okay.
Well, you did it the holiday time.
The holiday time.
But that's a little, little different.
Not because there's another event.
Right.
Okay, well, I think that, at this point...
The only other thing we could do is move that particular agenda item to separate. You're saying no.
I think that that's been worked on for a long time. I think it's already, is it, Margaret has published, I think so. No, no, not yet.
She hasn't, okay.
She hasn't yet.
Okay.
Let's just...
Yeah, they're starting to already get the order now.
So, yeah, I've, I've heard. So let's just assume that we will not be at Ames Day at the Capitol.
Okay, I will respond to Drew as well.
I already told him that Tuesday made it difficult for us. Okay, any other agenda items then? Okay. We have public forum number two. I will say, it's open, but I don't see any members of the public here. So seeing nobody move to the microphone, I'll close it. Liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements from the Supervisor. I might go first this time, just because I usually don't. Went to Colo City Council last night with Mike Cox and Craig Myers from the Conservation Commission, and there is, talked a little bit about the Hickory Grove sewer situation, and they are going to talk with their engineer, see if there is a possibility of us getting on their system. So no guarantees here, there, or any place, but they, that's kind of back on the table now, which would be a good option to have. Supervisor heads, and I did spend a good share of yesterday with Iowa Department of Public Health Resources, looking at the COVID-19 issues, trying to figure out how that's going to, could impact the county. And our responsibility as local government, have set a meeting for next week with the department heads and elected officials, not an activation in any way of a COUPCOC, but just to say, let's look at the COUPCOC, please look at it before then, get a list of questions, a list of, you know, things we might want to prepare. So everybody's going to be doing that. Last Thursday, there was a Storycom meeting, and we have signed a lease with the Gilbert School Board for the Gilbert, a site of the Gilbert Middle School that will go, will require a conditional use permit from the Gilbert City Council. So we're in the process of getting an application for CUP to Gilbert, and hopefully that will, would do it. That would be the fifth site of our five sites for the permanent, for a permanent system. We are getting users on the temporary system right now. Seeing the temporary system, which is not as robust as the permanent one will be, is better than what we have now, so that's working pretty well. And we all know we had a grant five drainage district meeting last Wednesday, and we'll have more. So those are some, that's some of the things I've been working on.
I'll go ahead, if that's okay.
Yeah, go for it.
And staff, so, yes, as Linda said, I listened to a webinar that actually was out from Iowa Public Department of Health from Friday, listened to it yesterday. It's about a two-hour webinar that I listened to. The first hour was just general information about COVID-19, and the second half, or second hour was Q and A, and obviously, it wasn't a live version, it was recorded. So I just tried to listen and write down some of the responses to some of the questions. It just seemed a little bit more pertinent. It's up in one, I just couldn't write that fast to get them all, get them all down. So did that. I did go to the Gilbert City Council meeting last night. A couple things, is they are going to have another meeting on the 23rd of March.
Great.
Great.
And the reason they're doing that is they inadvertently, when they did their, they were hoping last night would have been their second reading for the budget for approval. It inadvertently had a wrong number in there and it needs to be the same. So they're having a second meeting on the 23rd and stuff. They also did talk about the Storycom. And if I understood them correctly, they still liked the lagoon area better. But I don't think that was their final. I know that they just, that was their preference area is what I wrote down from their meeting. And then they also approved to extend the 28E for the urban renewal project as well, saying that we had, had done. They did the, the same thing as well. So just so that you know that. Tomorrow, let's see.
Urban fringe, you mean?
The urban fringe. Excuse me. Thank you. Yes, that's what I meant. No, because we just talked about that. So thank you for-
I just thought it meant mine made the switch over.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I do have on the calendar that tomorrow we have the conference board hearing tomorrow. I will be able to make that. I thought I was going to have another meeting right on top of it and do not. I have on the calendar for Thursday for the state of the community. I believe that's at 11:00 AM over at REG.
11:30.
11:30. Okay. And then Friday I have, we have the, looks like the, is it the Department Recognition at the county attorney's office. I've been asked to attend a mental health meeting Friday if I have time. It is that Mental Health Expo work group. They've got a new chair and co-chair and I think they're just wanting some, a little bit of information and direction and stuff. So I said, if my schedule allows, I would pop into those meetings as they move along. And then I think that, and then on Monday, the 9th, I have a tentative to attend the Story County Juvenile Justice Committee meeting on there and-
That'd be good because I have another meeting that time, I think.
Yeah. And, you know, things obviously, obviously change, but I do have it on my calendar to tentatively attend that. So.
Congratulations, Linda, on Storycom getting that contract signed.
Yeah.
Yay. I actually, I heard about it on Friday night. I, Karen, I went to G. Angelos and ran into the superintendent of the Gilbert Schools, Lindsey Vitera, and Kim Mosman, one of the school board members. And they started talking to me about him. So I spent my time on HERDA and I'm most likely to be spending my time, maybe a little bit more this week on HERDA. Brief update here for members of the public who may be listening is that HERDA Board last Thursday took a look at our financial situation and realized that we needed to make some service adjustments. And as a result of that, we're not going to see service five days a week in the outline, what, away from Ames or Nevada in Story County. Every county is being affected. Some counties are being affected more about runs. There'll be a couple of, probably two fewer buses on the road. And there will be some people who in the past have been used to basically treating that kind of like a taxi service with getting their ride right away. One person going where they want to be is that we're going to go back to more of a transit concept so that people will be asked to share rides so that they, we may pick somebody up and then stop and pick somebody else up. And then we'll be dropping that other person off and letting another person off. But it's not economically feasible to continue to provide one rider, long-distance services. And so I'm optimistic about these changes. I was down there yesterday, wrote the press release for it. And there will be, changes will be effective March 9th already. People are being contacted. Now in the entire seven county HERDA region, there are only 42, only, I say, sorry, backing up. There are 42 people who are what we're called subscription riders, that they're very regular, you know, and they're being paid for with either CICS or, you know, or that type of funding. And in our county, it appears there are three or four. And so those people are being told so that they can make other types of arrangements for the days when HERDA is not going to be able to serve them. The other response that I think will happen is others, people who are not subscription riders, but may be used to every other week riding somewhere, that they may be told, sorry, we're only going to Slater on Wednesdays now. And so we can't accommodate that request. So if you'd like to kind of shift your appointment or whatever to do instead, then we can accommodate you on the Wednesday. Or sorry, if you're in Ames or you're in Nevada, I know you've been used to, we're taking you at 8 o'clock, but that's a high-volume time. So your choices are you can ride with three other people or we can shift and maybe then you can ride with fewer people at a different time. Now there are some exceptions. People who are on dialysis, the urgent medical appointments, those are still getting service. Okay. So what we're trying to do is take care of some of the trips that people have just gotten used to taking and using HERDA basically as a taxi service and trying to make sure that's shifted. Those effects go into place March 9th. After one week, we'll be evaluating the changes to see how much that actually saved us. And it's not easy to predict. We know we can have too fewer drivers per county or, and move that, all the drivers down to 30 hours or less per week. But you never know how many people will be calling, you know, to book a day or two days out. If you get any calls, please, if they want to talk to and yell at somebody, refer them my way or refer them back down to HERDA. On that, the other supervisors are anticipating, the other board members of the, from the various counties are anticipating you get these calls.
So does the press release give all the specifics about the changes that will be made?
They're going to be shoving in, I wrote the draft of the press release, and then there's the section that the HERDA staff will shove in that will say, for your county, here are the changes being made. And it'll be sent out to the media in Jasper County and the media in Story County will receive it here. And then it'll all be posted online with all of the changes. Yes.
Could you make sure that we get that right away? Because that would be a good, it would be good to have that if somebody does ask a question.
Yes. And when I left yesterday, they were still working on shoving in changes. So that's on my list to say, hey, gang, make sure, and maybe they've sent it since this morning. But yes, because I think that everybody needs to have it, be aware of it so that, but you will, like, there will be some people who will be upset.
Just because you referenced it this time, and I think you brought it up or was questioned last time. So did you find out like how long they've been kind of running like that taxi service of saying of not doing multiple people?
Yes. Well, what, actually, the board had this discussion with staff probably two or three months ago about you need to start, to start taking a look at this, start telling some people that, sorry, we can't accommodate you quite as well as, quite as personally as you'd like to be accommodated. It was discovered, this is what the executive director then told the board, that when she went back to follow up through her chain of command, it turned out that some of the schedulers might have been giving into the pressure on the other end of the phone and booking those rides anyway. And so that, we thought we were realizing some savings earlier than it turned out we weren't.
We put some money into a system that was supposed to find these savings and efficiencies.
We are, Story County, yes, I understand. Story County itself is in the best shape of any of the seven counties. Jess is out trying to find those people and roll them over to funding. This is a situation though, where even with the funding, we need to ask these people to make some adjustments in, in the travel. Okay. And the adjustments there would, are for those people who have an expectation of literally being serviced like a taxi as opposed to maybe riding a little earlier, you know, getting to their doctor's appointment a little earlier or having to wait a little bit longer to go home. So those people that they're locating to shift over funding, they're not being denied per our understanding. It's, it's as of, is, is as that, look, this is the timeframe you're going to be moving. We did have one person yesterday from Story County who is a new rider, is my understanding. They, and she had been booked for a ride, I think it's today, and through CICS funding. And so they notified HERDA right away. But it's been proactively calling to everybody. So Jess is doing that, just like we paid on that. But there's still a bottom line cost and it's costing, there's a per rider cost and we know that's about $22 here in the county because that's the amount that's factored in that they reported for asset. There's a separate cost that they've not fact, the staff has not done the factoring as the same way. And that is there's just 86 cents a mile to put that bus on the road. And there's so much per driver pay time. And so that's what we now are having to work on. So it's not that those people who've been switched over to the funding to now pay the 22 cents one way or the other. That is started to happen. And, and, but we still have that other kind of spread or deficit. Story County is in the best shape of the seven counties. So our cuts compared for the other counties are less drastic, if you will. And also, as I said, we're evaluating it after one week and we'll evaluate it after another week to really make sure that we're getting people served that are supposed to be served on this. Each county also, the plan is for staff to talk to each county individually, the board of supervisors, which would come when they're going to book here, because they'll try and book as soon as possible here, is do you have priorities? Two of the counties at the board meeting, or the supervisors from those counties at the board meeting on Thursday indicated that they wanted to just have, you know, to have the hierarchy. That's a better way to say it. To have a hierarchy of medically disabled people, people who needed wheelchair lifts, needed to have people who were riding for, who might be intellectually disabled, having that clientele served first and to cut back then on even booking trips for your general riders. Each region in Iowa, each regional public transit in Iowa delivers service very differently. HERDA has been one of the two that delivers the most comprehensive to the citizens. And that is because we give rides to general public if they need it. Or they're having a temporary medical thing like a broken leg. We're trying, workforce, still giving some workforce rides and actually building up having workforce. We still want to try to move on that because that actually does cover costs. That brings money back. There, but are, there are other counties, there are other regional systems that will only provide transit if in fact the city pays. So there are places in Iowa where the county, the residents in the outline areas never get service. They only get it because it's in a city that's paying for it. And so there is a meeting of all transit entities. In fact, Lisa, you're speaking at it this month, right? Okay. And they expect part of this meeting to have discussions about the same type of monetary problems that other regions, even on different kinds of formulas or, sorry, formulas, different formats of delivering services, are, they're having trouble too. So I don't have the numbers in front of me, but we were provided these for the last three years related to Medicaid. The change in Medicaid, when Medicaid said you, that the group homes and the day habitation programs, we're no longer going to pay HERDA directly to transport those, those clients that we're going to give them to like mainstream as an example. Okay. And then mainstream has to figure out how to pay for transportation. The assumption was is that money would still flow to HERDA. That's not what happened. They had other cuts and so they started looking at some of their people are being moved around by staff in their personal vehicles. And there were staff driving their transport vans, et cetera. So in three years, we went from over a million dollars in 2017, fiscal year 2017, revenue from those types of rides to we're down and for fiscal year 19, it's down by, I believe, if my memory is correct, it's like $130,000. That's all lost revenue, which is how the reserve, HERDA had a $2 million reserve and has gone. And Lisa, I think you being at that conference on the 27th or whatever that Thursday, us Thursday in March is, is you're going to hear some other stories about that. Also, it's understanding, it was reported to us that there's been discussions between HERDA and CyRide. And CyRide is looking at the possibility of having to make some cuts for fiscal year 21 also. So while we're only going to focus on what we need to do to make HERDA sustainable, and we feel with this new scheduling model called simplified scheduling, that our goal is to keep HERDA sustainable for the future while other funding sources are identified. The other thing, as long as I'm delivering all this fun news, is that the money that HERDA gets from the federal transit agency is based upon rides two years ago. So as we've dropped in riders, as we've lost the MCOs over the last two years, what is also happening is that that money revenue from the feds will be less two years from now. And it's one pot of money that comes in and then all of the regional agencies in Iowa are given a percentage of the money based upon their total numbers of rider, as riders as a percentage of the riders to the whole state.
So that percentage changes. Is that also based on two years ago?
Correct.
So if-
So we're a little bit, yes, rock and a hard place because if, as we cut down the number of riders of our core ridership to date, okay, that looking down the road, that there will be fiscal reductions.
But it depends, it depends on if it's a percentage. It depends on what other regions are doing as well.
Exactly.
And if they're going down faster, say, than we are.
Right.
So, so there's some things there that, what was the discussion between HERDA and CyRide? I'm just kind of interested. Was it just that we're in the same boat or was it-
Yeah, we're in the same boat.
Or was there any combining for efficiencies? Is there some possibility there of doing something different in Story County because we have CyRide?
So the answer is, the conversation that I understand was had just last Thursday or Friday between the Director of CyRide and then the Operations Director for HERDA was some of were in the same boat and some of it was where can we go ahead and maybe combine some services, especially on the east side. Okay. There are two factors that weigh into this that makes it never easy. One of them is, is that HERDA's federal mother, federal money comes from one section of an, of the act. And I was just going to say 511, I, that's section, well, I think that's right. I'm not sure. And then HERDA's as a rural transit agency, it's section 507. And once again, those could be flipped. All right. But so that you can't pull down each other's money, but you can operate to some degree as joint. And that's why dial-a-ride, HERDA provides all the dial-a-ride services for CyRide. CyRide is paying $41,000 this year for dial-a-ride services. So that's money they're paying over. The other thing that makes this, oh, why the counties need to also pay attention is not only because of how this will impact the residents and services, but by law, HERDA can only, or any transit agency, okay, public transit, only 50% of their operating funds can come from the federal money. So as you drop that number of rides, okay, you also have to come up with the money to either supplement those or, or you can't just cut back to the point where you're not, where you're, all of a sudden you're, it's 75% funded by the feds. It doesn't work that way. You have to come- You have to come up with enough money to fund the other 50% of your services. So that's where it is right now. I will keep you informed, but I will get you those press, that press release right away. And as I said, if people want to yell, and that was part of what I was doing down there but yesterday, but it turned out nobody had really called yet, there's likely to be complaints, and I will keep you apprised exactly as it goes.
Right, thank you.
Sure.
Thanks.
Anything else? Then I think we're ready for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Hiddens.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.